Good evening. Good evening on this back-to-school eve. The board meeting of the Board of Education for August 27, 2019 is called to order. For tonight's meeting, any item that will be voted on this evening has been posted as required by state law. This meeting is being televised live and will be replayed throughout the next two weeks. Please check the board website for replay times. This meeting is also being streamed live on our PPS TV services website. Before we proceed, board members, are there any items you'd like to pull from the business agenda for a separate discussion and vote?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I have two items. One, I would like to pull the Audit Committee Charter for discussion of the revisions. And second, there is also a contract, the NVO Healthcare Associates Contract that was added to the agenda today and Ms. Marknix is prepared to, which is not standard practice, is prepared to just discuss why it was added to the agenda today.
Okay. Are there any other items anyone else would like to pull? I would like to pull the item regarding the Mike Walsh field as we have received a revised resolution on that item.
Madam Chair. That's just another question of the board. So, the Audit Committee Charter, assuming we're not going to have a vote this evening and that it may be later in the agenda, I would like to ask whether board members are going to have questions for our internal performance auditor or whether we should allow her to leave for the evening. She's prepared to stay, but if there aren't going to be board member questions for her, she's prepared to stay.
I'm going to have some questions, but I don't think they necessarily have to be answered by her.
Does that mean me?
Well, I mean, they're sort of, they're questions about essentially the difference between an audit function and an evaluation function.
Great. Well, I'm going to then ask Ms. Moore to stay.
Okay. Thank you very much. Before we begin the public comment period, I'd like to review our guidelines for public comment. The board thanks the community for taking the time to attend this meeting and provide your comments to the board. We value public input as it informs our work, and we look forward to hearing your thoughts, reflections, and concerns. Our responsibility as a board is to actively listen without distraction from electronic devices. One quick reminder, any oversized signs need to be in the back foyer and signs in the audience should not be held in a way that obstruct others' viewing of the meeting. Board members and the superintendent will not respond to comments or questions during public comment, but our board office will follow up on board-related issues raised during public testimony. Guidelines for public input emphasize respect and consideration of others. Complaints about individual employees should be directed to the superintendent's office as a personnel matter. If you have additional materials or items you would like to provide the board or superintendent, we ask that you give them to Ms. Powell to distribute to us. Presenters, we'll have a total of three minutes to share your comments. Please begin by stating your name and spelling your last name for the record. Unfortunately, our timer has walked away, so we will, our board manager, Cara, will hold up a sign at 30 seconds. So, we'll work our way through. We'll give you some kind of indication when your time is winding down. We appreciate your input and thank you for your cooperation. Ms. Bradshaw, do we have anyone signed up for student or public comment?
Yes. Chair, are we calling them all together or two at a time?
I think we have that request from the students, right? So, feel free to all approach the dais together, and Ms. Bradshaw is going to just combine the time for the five of you who have signed up. So, thank you very much.
My name is Abby. I go to Jefferson High School.
My name is Katia. I go to Grant High School.
My name is Ella. I also go to Grant.
My name is Jayden. I go to Wilson High School.
My name is Yenna, and I go to Cleveland High School.
My name is Elliot, and I go to Franklin High School.
And we are all members of the Climate Strike Coalition, and we are here today to talk to you about the strike, and today we delivered a letter to Superintendent Guero regarding the strike, and we will be reading the letter today. Superintendent, on September 20th, youth from around Portland will be striking from school to demand climate action. Portland's strike is part of a global movement calling for climate justice and the end of the age of fossil fuels. The movement has come out of Greta Thunberg's Fridays for Future Strikes, where students leave classes and take part in demonstrations to demand action to prevent future climate chaos. The strikes have grown globally over the past year, including widespread participation this past March by PPS students. We will be marching again on September 20th to stand up for the future that we deserve. It is clear that youth have a unique perspective on the issue of climate justice, which is why it is so important for us to be taking strong action. We are youth who care about the future, youth who want to work towards solutions, youth who are willing to make sacrifices and stand up for what we believe in. That is why we are counting on Portland Public Schools to support us in this action.
In May 2016, the Portland School Board unanimously passed Resolution 5272. In May 2019, in response to student leader demands for implementation of Resolution 5272, Superintendent Guadalupe Guero wrote, quote, "I want to make clear our intent and commitment to following through on implementing the key elements of this resolution affirmed in 2016," end quote. One of these key elements is that, quote, "All Portland Public Schools students should develop confidence and passion when it comes to making a positive difference in society and come to see themselves as activists and leaders for social and environmental justice," end quote.
We know that many students will want to join the global climate strike, and we are concerned that this be a safe, empowering, and educational experience for us. To that end, it is important that the district take action to support student leadership and activism in the face of the climate crisis. We respectfully demand the following from the district.
By September 5th. Make sure that all administrators, teachers, coaches, and staff are aware of the September 20th strike. All schools should be given clear, consistent guidelines for how they should respond to students participating in the strike in ways that do not penalize or inhibit participation. Allow students to do outreach in schools, including but not limited to posters, morning announcements, speaking at assemblies, or school social media.
Ensure that students will not be penalized for missing classroom time on September 20th. That includes no tests that day and instructing teachers to provide opportunities for youth to make up missed material without penalty.
Ensure that participation in the strike does not impact student participation in athletics, i.e. no penalties for students missing school or practice that day. Athletics should not be penalized in practice or competition for an unexcused abstinence relating to the strike.
Provide lessons about the climate crisis and strike for teachers to utilize in the day, or in all schools on the day, leading up to or onto the day of the strike. Curriculum suggestions and resources can be provided by the PPS Climate Justice Committee.
In order to facilitate safe routes for youth traveling to City Hall, we ask that you communicate with Trimate about the need for extra buses on routes from schools to downtown on the morning of the strike.
Set a date for a climate summit in spring 2020.
This is our agenda for the strike. On September 20th, students will be leaving school with plans to gather across this from City Hall at 10:30 a.m. for a rally at Terry Shrink Plaza. Youth and adults will then walk to an open area just south of Omsi, crossing the river on the Hawthorne Bridge. At the second location, there will be a family-friendly climate mobilization festival with speakers, workshops, and tabling extending through the afternoon. The youth organizers have obtained all necessary permits from the city for these locations and the march. We have asked for the superintendent for a response to these demands by Tuesday, September 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Bradshaw, do we have any other student?
No.
Do we have any other student or public comment?
We have public comment from Barb Makin.
Welcome.
Pretty close to three minutes, we'll see. Good evening. My name is Barb Makin, and I'm here the day before school starts to put three more minutes of attention onto our deficits of educating Black youth and to urge you to prioritize fixing these district deficits. I'm starting my 14th year at Roosevelt. We've seen our graduation rates increase, and we're seeing incremental growth in hiring staff of color. Our past principal put a lot of money into sending two cohorts of staff to the excellent equity training at Center for Equity and Inclusion, which I urge the district to do for all our schools. Yet, as I looked over our new faculty for this year, I thought about the nearly 10 African-American staff we've lost in the last several years. Most of these departures were not voluntary, and race or racism played a role. Our Black students, and in fact, all our students, need to have Black adults teaching and leading in our schools. I'll start with two suggestions. Number one, district creates a transparent system to report out on interviewing, hiring, and retention rates of staff of color at each school each year. Let's hold ourselves accountable. Number two, guided by staff of color, the district should create one or more mechanisms to check in with teachers of color multiple times each year to see what they need to feel safe, valued, and supported, not by building admin, but by a carefully selected team. We can't keep losing great staff to other districts, or worse, to medical leave and lawsuits. Let's ask our staff of color what they need, and let's hold ourselves accountable. On a very related note, Ron Herndon's opinion piece in the Oregonian shook me. He said that whoever is writing the curriculum for PPS should have a 90% success rate of getting Black kids on track. I agree. And let's check the record on who actually did write the GVC. Do you know? Mr. Herndon called us out on the shameful and embarrassing test score differences between Black and white students. And by embarrassing, I mean I feel embarrassed as a teacher in this system. And to truly see the reality, I urge the district to begin tracking data of African immigrants separately from native-born African-American students. Do you have any guess how much the numbers would drop? I hope you are curious. We need to get closer to the truth and stop hiding behind conflated data. As a white teacher, I am part of the problem, but I strive to educate myself. I've learned Spanish. I go to trainings. I read books. I talk to people. This week, as I painted my garage, I was listening to video speeches by Dr. Chris Emden, Dr. Jeff Duncan Andrade, Dr. Zaretta Hammond. They are so inspiring. They have vision, and they have specifics. And when I hear them describe what's happening in other places, I feel elated and I feel hopeful. But when I go back to work, I'm ready to engage my department, my colleagues, on these takes of how to transform what we're doing. There's no space for it. We're talking about GVC. We're dancing around how to change from these good lessons to these good lessons. So, instead of dancing around, I will feel much better as a teacher if we sit down, if we get grounded, if we name and address what's happening in our schools, all the ways that racism is happening, and take some very basic common sense steps to start to eliminate. Thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent, would you like to provide your report?
I would. Good evening, directors and to our audience here live and viewing at home. Good evening. Buenos tardios. It's a big week for us. Tomorrow, as you know, marks the start of the 2019-20 school year. We're excited about welcoming back students tomorrow. Kindergarten students begin their careers in PPS next Tuesday after Labor Day holiday. What you see here in this cover shot, for those who haven't had a chance to yet, is the modern, the new Grant High School library, just to give you a little sneak peek there. Central office staff will be deployed out to schools tomorrow, supporting our school communities. Personally, my schedule will start out bright and early tomorrow at the beautiful, modernized Grant there in front of you. Please tune into KGW if you're up early at sunrise, and certainly, everyone is welcome to the grand opening of Grant on Saturday, September 7th, starting at 10 a.m. Later in the morning tomorrow, I'll be introducing Governor Kate Brown as we welcome, along with other board members and elected officials, the incoming freshman class at Jefferson High School. This will be another great opportunity for us to celebrate the huge passing of the Student Success Act, which we look forward to engaging in meaningful conversations with our broader community about to plan for how these resources and investments will be allocated. I'll also be visiting Scott and Wrigler Elementary Schools. I'm proud of the improvement efforts underway at these schools, both in the way the community has come together to support the students and in the way that strong leadership being exhibited to help lead the school transformation. And as superintendent, I look forward to welcoming Wrigler students and families to their first day of school and remind all of our students that they belong and are welcomed in our cities and schools. The opening of a modernized Grant is yet another major milestone in our modernization work and illustrative of the broad menu of work that's gone on throughout the summer. Our school of modernization and contractors have had the most productive and busy summer, I think, in the history of PPS. They've been working at a multitude of school campuses, installing new roofing, accelerating seismic upgrades, installing new elevators, doing ADA improvements, and other safety priorities. Madison High School staff have also now moved on to the Marshall campus while we work on modernizing their facility. This is a picture of some of the demolition work that's already underway. Madison students, please make sure you give yourself a little extra time tomorrow, given the necessary and new commute time. And we'll begin the modernization work at Lincoln in just a few months. It's been a busy summer because, just as we've been preparing our buildings, our educators have also been hard at work, participating in a range of professional development and training this summer. Around 180 school leaders spent four days at Franklin this month at our annual Leadership Institute. Our Stronger Together team participated in four days of workshops and sessions around many of our district initiatives and priorities. So, almost 500 teachers and administrators also participated in a subsequent two-day Campus Leadership Institute, along with teacher leaders and teams. And over 100 teachers new to the profession and 200 more additional teachers who are also new to the district attended new educator orientation. We also had close to two dozen educators over the summer get training and certification in supporting students with dyslexia, and I look forward to doubling down on some of these very important efforts. And there's more. In addition, the district, in partnership, hosted training for Portland Federation of School Professional Classified Staff to grow our pipeline of educational assistance support staff, with more than 20 different professional development offerings in August alone, including pre-K training. And in the next two weeks, more professional development trainings are scheduled in the areas of technology, international baccalaureate coursework, collaboratives, leveraging Title I funded instructional training, technology, training for our teachers on special assignment, workshops in early education, and much, much more. So, we're a district that's going to continue to be committed to professional development and to supporting and growing the talented members of the overall Team PPS. In addition, the district hosted, I just mentioned, PFSP Classified Staff to grow our pipeline of educational assistance and support staff with an array of training, and in the next two weeks, more PD is scheduled to occur. You find a couple of our teammates there. And speaking of Team PPS, we're welcoming into the 1920 school year a number of new school leaders. We're excited to have announced a couple dozen newly appointed school leaders. We're pleased that we were able to fill many of our leadership positions from within the district. Many of our assistant principals will be leading school communities as a next stage in their leadership journey. We've also, we also have some experienced principals who've agreed to take on a fresh leadership post in a new school community. So, thank you to those leaders, these leaders, for their commitment to students all across the district. So, we have a robust school community engagement process as we identify and promote candidates to lead our schools. Something folks may not know is that I personally interview every new school leader as a final stage of the hiring process. We all know how important it is. We have dynamic, knowledgeable leaders at the helm in our schools, and I'm excited about the cadre of school leaders, both new and returning across the entire district. I seem to be missing a slide. Okay. Might be a little late to do a refresh. And in talking about how we've prepared the summer, I'd be remiss not to mention a hugely successful Project Community Care Day this past Saturday. At 70 schools across the district, students, teachers, administrators, families, central office staff, board directors, neighbors, scouts, and volunteers stepped up to help clean and beautify our campuses in advance of the start of the new school year. Thank you, everyone, who helped out. Project Community Care is something that requires a bit of sweat and elbow grease, but I know all of us get back far more energy than we expend. I continue to be impressed by the community's investment in their local schools. It's a wonderful way for all of us to gather to do good work and celebrate public education in Portland, and we have a short video for those of you that weren't available on Saturday so you get a glimpse of what a great day it was.
Right now, we're cleaning up the school.
Community Care Day is when the community gets to come in and help beautify the school grounds.
So, when all the students come back, the parents and the kids get to see a nice little lawn.
And then, we also need it so that it looks nice, and we don't have people tripping over, like, rocks and stuff that are all over the place.
Our volunteers have been pulling weeds, putting down bark dust, and also getting our playground ready.
We're proud to be out here again, serving for yet another Community Cares Day. This is an annual tradition. You see here out at our schools, students, parents, family members, members of the community, all pitching in, lending a hand to make sure our schools are as beautiful as they can be to welcome our students next Wednesday for the first day of school.
I'm picking up the weeds with my mom.
I think our public schools are one of the last institutions where we really bring community together, and things like this, where we do that, we bring parents and kids and people who aren't attached to the school, I'm not attached to the school, together to work on something. I think that goes a huge distance towards bridging the gaps that we're seeing all around us.
Well, we just moved to Portland, and we want to be part of the community, and the best way to do it then to help out the schools.
Well, it shows them that we actually care and respect their school. I mean, this is just like our home. I come here every morning when I drop off my daughters.
My hope is that when my parents and my students arrive next Wednesday, that they look at all the hard work that everybody came together to do, and they join in efforts so that we can work together as a united whole at Capitol Hill.
Thank you to all our volunteers for making it a successful Project Community Care Day. And as has been tradition, I want to leave off my report tonight. We like to introduce new team members, particularly the senior leadership, and I don't think everybody's had a chance to meet. I'd like to have him come up and take a moment to introduce himself as our new Chief of System Performance, Dr. Russell Brown. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name's Dr. Brown. I'm pleased to be joining the Portland community, and it was a joy this weekend to spend time at Bridger Elementary School. It was great watching the turnout for that, and I did my part pulling weeds that morning, something I felt very competent at. It is a pleasure to be here. This will be the third school system in which I've done metric work, third city that I've done this, have done metric work across a wide sort of variety of areas within those, including work with the mayor in Cleveland, as well as the Cleveland system, which had a unique relationship with the state of Ohio, and it had its own separate metric system. Went on to Baltimore County, where we looked at a wider range of metrics to communicate our progress to the community, as well as how we utilize schools and our growth as a system over time. And I'm really pleased to be coming into this community and seeing that the board has already laid, I think, a tremendous foundation for this work, moving forward, looking forward to talking a little bit about that this evening and carrying that ball forward with you in a iterative process to come up with a series of board commitments to the community that we can speak to over time. So, thank you.
We're glad to have you aboard, Russ. He's come in running. We're going to put him right to work, so he'll be part of our discussion a little bit later in the agenda. That concludes my report.
I'd like to call up, please, our Director of Human Resources, Sharon Reese, and Director of Labor Relations, Carol Hawkins, to introduce this next item regarding the ratification of two important contracts.
Thank you, Chair and board members. To my left is our Senior Director of Labor Relations and Employee Relations, Carol Hawkins, who led both of the bargaining teams for PPS. So, I'm going to have her introduce both of the agreements before you this evening.
Thank you. I'd like to speak briefly about both of the contracts and then allow our union partners to also speak to a moment. So, if you don't, if it, if possible, we'd like to do both of the items together. Starting off with the PFSP agreement, this is a two-year agreement that provides for a 3% increase for this group of professionals who serve our students every day. This contract covers our par educators, our school secretaries, our OTPTs, and several other categories, but to give you a flavor, they're really an important group in our schools and doing important work with our students. A couple of the highlights in the contract that I'd like to call out, specifically, we included a study leave for those employees who are continuing their education and becoming professional educators to grow our pipeline of educators to PPS, and so, we're very, we're very excited about that. We also now have the opportunity to provide a bilingual stipend to our educators who are called upon in the schools to provide those very helpful and very necessary language skills in serving our students. Additionally, we made some changes to our classifications to bring us in line with the Oregon Fair Pay Act. We also increased the safety for our students by allowing individuals who directly work with students who have IEPs and other types of plans to have access to the pieces of those plans that they need in order to best perform their work. This will be a two-year contract. The membership finished ratification yesterday, and so, we're asking for board approval on this agreement. Any questions before I move on?
We can go into the second contract, and then I'll call Belinda Reagan up to provide some comment on the PFSP contract.
Okay. Thank you. The second contract that we have before us today is our ATU contract, which covers our bus drivers, our type 10 drivers who are not CDL holding drivers, and our dispatchers who are transporting our students all over the district on a daily basis. So, this contract is a three-year contract. We're very excited about some of the progress that we made with this team as well. In both of these negotiations, I'll say the spirit was very collaborative and cooperative, and I'm really pleased with the way that the negotiations went. With this group, we've created a tuition reimbursement pool to provide an opportunity for these employees to access some additional courses that will assist them in their work and in the long run benefit PPS with a more highly skilled group of employees. We provided for a 3% increase for each of the three years of this contract with the addition of a market adjustment in year one for some of our hard-to-fill and hard-to-retain positions. Additionally, we created a part-time medical benefit plan for these employees, recognizing how important healthcare is and wanting to provide them with some ability to access that through some employer-paid benefits. I think that that's the, kind of, the high points. I welcome questions for each of those, and then we'll allow our union partners some time as well.
I'd like to call up Belinda Reagan from PFSP. I'd like to call up Belinda Regan from PFSP to provide your comments. Thanks.
Good evening, Superintendent and School Board members. I have not met all of you yet. I welcome you to Portland's schools. It's delightful to see you this evening. My name is Belinda Regan. I am the President of PFSP. I've been in that role for 10 years. I have to say that, and I've bargained longer than my 12 years with the union, I've done this for a fair amount of time, and I want to start out by thanking Carol, and I see Stacy Jung is up here as well, and we also had Claire Skelly from Special Ed, and Genevieve Rowe, who is now home with a brand-new little Sydney, bargaining with us. It was the best session we've ever had. Carol was very, is very correct in her assessment that we were collaborative. Obviously, there's things we didn't always agree on, but we felt very, very positive about the, the way that we were able to work together. I have never, I have not seen this ever in my history with the district and in bargaining in the past. And I do believe that a large part of it was due to the fact that we had in-house people working with us, rather than bringing outsiders in, other attorneys and so forth. We all have a vested interest in the district, and I think in order for our, our different units to bargain successfully, you need to have that, that feeling of belonging and being a part of this. We want the success for employees, obviously. I, I have to say with also what Carol brought up today, tonight, and with what she just said, is so, salary, of course, is obviously important. That 3% and the steps that are available to our folks is always a, something that they welcome. But almost more importantly, in many cases, is the secondary language that we put in. We changed our placement language so that people were valued for their educations and for their experience, and were not limited at where they could be placed when they were hired. We also changed our, we allow, we now allow for those who have earned degrees while working with the district to get a step for each degree that they've earned. These are things that make our employees feel as if you appreciate them. And while money obviously helps pay the bills, it's, in order to maintain the staff and the, the folks that we have from PFSP, we really think that these things made them the happiest. And she also mentioned the, the second language stipend. You can't believe how delighted folks are for that. We're, we're really thrilled. I also think there's a great advantage to the district to having this second language stipend, because you can now hire a, a school secretary, for instance, and require that a language be part of her skill or his skill. So I think that that is a great advantage to you as well. We are thrilled with the outcome. Our members were thrilled. Our vote was 469 yes, 3 no. And we know very well who those 3 were. But I, I have to say that it's also the biggest turnout. We have, we represent 1,400-plus folks in the district in 50 different classifications. We are just delighted with the vote turnout. The best, it's the best vote turnout we've ever had for any election. And so I, I do think it showed the enthusiasm of those that we represent and support for what the district has done to help put them, to help them, make, make them feel better and worth what we think they're worth. I also want to take a moment to just thank my bargaining team, because without them, we could not have done this. It would spend, it, it's months of, of hard work that last night, we made the district folks sit with us until 11:15 at night, until we finally just, that's it, we were done, and could walk out the door feeling like we were successful. Michelle Batten is our field rep, and she is here. And next to her, and, and Michelle works full-time at our union, John McDuffie is a half-time employee at our union. He also works half-time at Oakley Green as a library assistant. We have Frank Acosta, who is a campus security agent at Lincoln High School. Tammy Adams is a sign language interpreter, and she was really instrumental in making some major change to their language this year, too. Michelle Katina is a physical therapist, works half-time for the district now, and, excuse me, was one of our, our late stayers that last night. Michael Freed is a par educator at Cleveland. Glenn John Dahl is a par educator at Franklin High School. Norma Lawson is a school secretary at Benson. We also had the fabulous assistance of our office administrator, Kathy Muir, who retired from the district after nearly 30 years, seven or eight years ago, and we grabbed her up and brought her into our office and enjoy having her working with us, as well as the assistance of Sarah Fitch, who works in HR. But I want to thank all of you, and I encourage you to vote yes on our contract. We're most pleased with it. Amy called me this week to chat and ask sort of what I wanted to talk about, and I said to her, "I'm not going to come up and say nasty things like I usually do." So, don't worry. I, I'll, I'll speak kindly, because it really did go well, and I appreciate it. Appreciate all of you being here, too. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I wasn't worried. The board will now vote on Resolution Number 5954, Resolution to Authorize 2019-21 Agreement Between Portland Federation of School Professionals and School District Number IJ, Multnomah County, Oregon. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Director Brim Edwards moves, and Director Moore seconds the motion to adopt Resolution 5954. Ms. Bradshaw, is there any citizen comment on Resolution 5954?
No.
Is there any board discussion on this resolution?
I just have a comment, and I know this is set in stone, but it was about the tuition reimbursement, and hoping that it could be tracked, because I had a conversation yesterday at work about this. We tend to see that people don't take advantage of the professional development opportunities if they have to come up with the money out of their pocket. So I'm just curious if we could track that over time and find out if that's being utilized, and if not, why, why not?
Good point.
I can speak to that. In our bargaining, it is tracked by the travel desk. We utilize every cent of it every year. We would love to always have more. We get access for our last year, our last contract. It's, it is absolutely, in fact, today I have got about 50, 70 emails from folks wanting to know what the guidelines were. So yes, it is utilized every year.
Thank you.
I just want to, I've sat up here during several contract ratifications, and I think this is the best outcome ever.
I would agree.
There's been a, a wide variety, so I just want to thank both the district team and our partners in our schools for really coming together in a spirit of collaboration and setting us up for the start of a great school year. So thanks for the time everybody took to make, make a really good outcome for, ultimately will be good for our students.
I want to comment, too, on, Belinda, your comment about the, the nature of the negotiations and dealing with an internal district team, and I think this is just one more reflection of the stability that we're experiencing at PPS that has not been the case for the last many years, and we're seeing it in a lot of different areas. So, so that was nice to hear, and also just the fact that we now have an articulated career ladder for our PFSP employees, so people can really start to map out where they want to see their careers go and how the district is going to support them.
And if I could just say in regard to that, Amy, 21 of the new teachers that came to the school this year came out of our bargaining. So career ladder is essential.
That's fantastic. All right, the board will now vote on Resolution 5954. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Are there any abstentions? Resolution 5954 is approved by a vote of 7 to 0, with student representative Lattarel voting yes. All right, fantastic. All right, we have, moving on to the contract with the Amalgamated Transit Union, which Carol and Sharon introduced earlier. Do you want any further opportunity to speak to this contract, or we'll just move forward? Okay, the vote, the board will now vote on Resolution Number 59. Oh, I'm, should we get it on the table before we call them up for comment? Either way? Let us, we'll just, we'll move the motion, and then we'll invite you up. How's that? The board will now vote on Resolution 5955, Resolution to Authorize the 2019 to 22 Agreement Between the Amalgamated Transit Union and School District Number IJ, Multnomah County, Oregon. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Director Bailey moves, and Director Brim Edwards seconds the motion to adapt, adopt Resolution 5955. Ms. Bradshaw, is there any citizen comment on Resolution 5955?
Yes, we have Jimmy Applehands and Beth Blumklotz.
Great. Please come forward.
Thank you for having us. Hi. Superintendent School Board, thank you for having us tonight. I, I'm going to echo the same sentiments. It was a stark contrast from the last negotiations. It was, it was a breath of fresh air to have Carol and Lisa. I don't see Dan here. I don't know. And also, from our management side, Keith and Terry were there as well, and everybody felt, this time around, I felt heard. Our team felt heard. We felt that it was more collaborative than last time. You know, we're not always going to agree on everything. We butted heads a little bit on a few things. I think it shows a lot that last time we were here, we told you that if things aren't going well, we'll be back, and we're back now because things went well, and we wanted to thank you. Yeah, there was a lot of good things in here. The, the type 10 health benefits were, were very important. We have a lot of coworkers that now can have health benefits because of that, and they're very grateful on that. Seeing the, and, and accepting a three-year contract was also really great. It's something we pushed for last year and had a lot of pushback on that we didn't understand why, and this year, it came in on it. And also, a small thing, but also kind of a big thing, is changing all of the gendered language to neutral they/them. I really appreciate that. It is a very more encompassing and, and accepting of everybody in our group, so thank you for that.
Hi, I'm Beth Blumklotz, and yes, thank you. We really appreciate this, the support more this year. It felt supportive in the meeting, so much more so. It felt more of a conversation, and one of the things that we wanted to do with this particular contract was to add more entities that provide for a better quality of life and with the tuition reimbursement. Hopefully, people will, will take it up. We have several drivers who, when we talk about ahead of time going into the contract negotiation, and the drivers put down what they would like to see, and so we had several drivers ask for that, and they were pleasantly surprised, and, and kind of, school bus drivers have felt forgotten and ignored for so long. It feels really good that, you know, for those of you who are able to do the, the ride-alongs and, and it's, the invitation is always open, please wait till October, maybe, get through the beginning of the school year. But I encourage you to, to participate with that. It really gives you a good flavor of what Portland Public Schools, what we have in its entirety, rather than just in the classroom and just on the playground. We do support the teachers, we do support the families, and these parents are entrusting their children with us, our most vulnerable students, to people they barely know, and we're driving while we have a, a classroom in the back of our bus. And this year, most of us, we have more students than we've had before. So the way the routing is, we have, all the seats are being filled, or all the rows are, and some of the rows have two students in, in those rows. And so that's, that's a new thing. That's a big deal for, for us. We want to have quality people driving those buses, quality drivers who know how to interact with students and who understand what their needs are, and to be able to interact with them while driving the bus, while interacting with our Portland traffic, and getting to school on time safely. So I just appreciate that there is a better understanding for the value of what we do, that we have more and more drivers being able to walk around when they're talking about careers, and they can say, "I'm a school bus driver," and they have their heads up and they feel proud of it. And I feel like that's something that Jimmy and I, that we have brought to Portland Public Schools and as the city at large, is let's be proud of it. This, this is a good thing. This is something that we provide, it's an excellent service. So thank you for getting on board with us. Thank you for listening and going back and forth with us. You've actually made us better. You know, we've learned how to research and, you know, argue professionally and everything. So we really, we appreciate you as well. The three-year part is, is major. I feel like there's one more something, but thank you.
I also just wanted to say, it speaks volumes that the last negotiations took, I want to say about 20 months, and this one took two and a half months. And so I wanted to thank both your side and our side for coming together in the spirit of getting this done in, in time for this school year to start.
Is there any board discussion on this resolution?
I just want to say to the new board members, take them up on the bus ride.
Yep.
It's eye-opening, and we'll give you a really, a good appreciation for the work that's being done every day with those, before those kids are dropped off on the, on the doorstep, and they, I'm sure they can arrange it, but it's a great experience.
Thank you, Julia.
Can I just, I, I just want to thank everybody for, I think PPS is finally turning a corner, and, and we really are being collaborative, and it's, it's going to make us a better district, it's going to make student experiences better across the board. If, we truly are all in this together, and, and I'm glad to see it reflected in labor negotiations. And I, I do this all the time. I want to thank Carol, because I think she has been, I think you've been instrumental in changing the atmosphere around labor negotiations. So I'm very, I'm very happy that everybody's happy.
I would like to, yes, I would like to say that with Carol, she would actually explain why something could not be done, and that is huge, because not everyone works in HR. Not everyone understands the HR lingo, you know? And so there were some times she would say, "Well, that's not really possible because..." And we're like, "Oh, okay, we're not just being told no," or being looked down upon or spoken to as though we don't know what we're doing. We know what we're doing. You, Carol, she knows what she's doing, and she was able to go ahead and have a conversation where we still felt like we were people when we, when we would leave the meetings. There were many times the meetings ended with, "Okay, bye, we'll see you," and, you know, there was not this, "Close the door, close the door. Okay, now let's talk." It was great, so.
Great.
It is, it is in the best interests of our children to have PPS be a good employer.
Absolutely.
And it's not just money. Money is important, but it's not just money. So, thank you, everybody.
All right, the board will now vote on Resolution 5955. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
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 All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Are there any abstentions? Resolution 5955 is approved by a vote of 7 to 0, with student representative Lattarel voting yes. Thank you so much. Thank you very much. Have a great first day of school. Have a great first day of school. All right. Superintendent Guerrero, next we have a report from our Bond Accountability Committee. Would you like to introduce that item?
I'm on up, gentlemen.
Welcome.
Thank you. Chair Konstam, Superintendent, welcome to the new directors. I'm Kevin Spellman with your Bond Accountability Committee. We are gonna have a slightly different report today. I'm gonna be unusually brief. We have relatively little time, but we are gonna introduce a subject we haven't talked about, so we wanna save time for, for that. That's not to say what's contained in our report is not very important, so I hope you'll ask questions if I skip over something too quickly. As the superintendent said, it was, it's been a very busy summer. Work at Grant High School, Roosevelt, Kellogg, Madison, all the health and safety work, and plus continuing planning and design work for Lincoln and Benson. The other significant change in organization was the introduction of Marina Cresswell, who I understand is on vacation this week, but we're looking forward to working with Marina. The big, again, the superintendent talked about the opening of Grant High School. We're very pleased to see that happen, happening, and we want to stress that this is the last major project of the 2012 bond. That program is coming in within budget, and it is on the schedule that was established in 2012. Each, each project in that program has met its schedule, which is a, a great tribute to the staff and the contractors and designers. There is something we shouldn't forget about Grant High School. It's, even though the program has come in under budget, Grant High School is significantly more expensive than was expected, even at the time, two years ago. Its cost has increased substantially, and we hope that there'll be a, a good debrief on what happened on the project so we can learn those lessons going forward. It's also important to note that although the 2012 bond has come in within the, within the budget, some of the IP, the summer work, has been deferred and was not completed. So, we need to be upfront about that. Enough was completed to satisfy the promises made to the taxpayers for the bond, but nevertheless, the full scope was not. And we need to be clear about that. 2017, the budget situation there has not improved. The unfunded portion has increased since we were last here, largely due to the MPG building. So, scope has increased, which causes that. However, we, it's, the unfunded portion right now is $270 million. And if you say that really quickly enough times, it doesn't seem like too much of a problem. But again, we need to be concerned about creep here or leaping. In some cases, one year ago, almost to the day, you were being told that the unfunded portion was $132 million. Today, it's 270. Again, there's a scope factor there, but we have to be, we believe, have to be rigid, more rigid at least, on fiscal discipline. Which brings us to Madison. Madison's broken ground. Unfortunately, it's broken ground with an estimate that is slightly, but nevertheless, over the increased approved budget. And we're very concerned about that. We've seen the, the situation at Franklin, Roosevelt, and, and Grant. I just mentioned what's happened there. And we think it's a mistake to go into starting that project with a reduced contingency and even committing some program contingency to making up for shortfalls. We think there are other steps that could be taken. We're also talking of cost. We are still waiting for a study that has been long-promised, that would give us some indication of the costs of high school and other schoolwork in competing districts. And that's been promised for a long time, we and you, actually. I think there's a resolution asking for it even. So, we really hope we get that. We need that data, and if we're gonna be held, holding ourselves accountable, we need to know what, what we're competing with.
Kevin, can I just ask a question on that? Since I wasn't on the board for that, what, what is that, you say that report is benchmarking against other school districts that have done similar construction?
Right. Yeah, we, we asked for this, it was actually when, when Grant, the costs on Grant High School were starting to escalate. We were asking simply the question that what do high schools cost other districts? What do middle schools cost other districts? Because it could be that we are building something that's greater than other districts. And that's a legitimate policy decision, but if we are, we should know that. It could be we're building less and it's costing more, but we need that kind of benchmarking data.
Yeah, and I, and I think my, my, I think it's, it's great. My question would be making sure that whoever's doing that analysis is, is accurately benchmarking, 'cause it's really challenging. It's easy to look at a high school in Salem and say, "Oh, they built it for X dollars," without taking into account the urban-built environment, you know, construction costs, et cetera. So, I would just wanna make sure that that benchmarking, which is important but extremely hard to do accurately, is, is being done well. So...
But I just wanna emphasize that this was a critical request in the context of looking at the budget gap, because it wasn't just the escalating construction costs, but we, it was very clear that our cost per square foot for the 2017 projects was more than the difference between escalation from 2012. Projects completed just three years prior or something. So, we'll hopefully get a report back to the board about when we can expect to see that. Proceed.
Thank you. I'm gonna pass over to Dick, who'll introduce himself and...
Thank you. Chair Konstam, Director Superintendent Guerrero, thank you for this opportunity to address the Board of Directors. My name is Richard Steinberg. I'm a member of your Bond Accountability Committee, and I'm here today representing the whole committee with a particular set of recommendations for you to consider. Most of you probably know something about my background as a, professional background as a civil engineer when you appointed me to the committee. What you may not know, though, is that I was also a one-time student at Fernwood, at Dunaway, and a 1967 graduate of Cleveland High School. And before you do the math on that, I'm gonna move on quickly. A handout is, Kevin just passed around, is in bulletized and kind of an outline format of the presentation. And because I'm giving that to you also in writing, I'm not gonna go over some of the things that are very obvious that you can pick up on your own as you go through it. But I will touch on some key points and then try to conserve time for questions that you may have, and be respectful of the amount of time that you've allocated for this particular topic. So, the committee is aware that the board has been considering amending the BAC's charter to include responsibilities regarding the future bond program. And with that in mind, we took a leap forward and started to think about some things that are important, we believe, in laying the foundation for the development of the next bond program. And one of those is, in particular, we wanna talk about tonight, and that's about seismic and resilient standards that the board may wanna consider. Having said that, we, we also feel, and I think it was in, in the report that Kevin just summarized, that we're not saying that the 2012, 2017 bond projects were designed in a substandard way with respect to seismic standards. They, they met code, as far as we can tell, and in some cases, imagine, in a creative way, exceeded some code requirements. So, we think that that's really good. What we think is still needed, though, is for the board to consider adopting a set of seismic and resilient standards that may well exceed, on purpose, code standards for the next bond program. And so why is that important? Schools are designed for risk all the time. Fire risks, sadly, active shooter risks, all of those are really, really important. The, the likelihood of one of those events happening is, is pretty small, just statistically, but, but all of that has to be done and it's essential. The risk of a Cascadia major, the, the big one, major Cascadia Seduction Zone earthquake is 100%. It is 100%. We just don't know the date. We don't know if it'll be tomorrow or in 100 years, but it's 100%. It, it's important also to recognize that earthquake codes are, by definition, life-safety codes, and that sounds really good and it is really important. What that means, though, is if a building performs as expected based on the code standards, it shouldn't collapse, really important. People should be able to get out of it safely, really important. But the damage may be so significant that it may be uneconomical from a practical sense to repair. And so, the building is, is an entire economic loss, which probably isn't good enough for a school district. School districts are different than developers. Nothing wrong with developers, but their risk profile is the time they build it, and they, so they build it, they sell it, they're done. School districts create buildings that maybe last 100 years, long time, and, and the district will own them and operate them for a long, long time. So, the, the committee thinks the risk horizon and viewpoint needs to be much different than it would be for a developer, and perhaps much different than just code requirements because of the community investment in, in the buildings. So, some things about the risk. The Oregon Resilience Plan, which you may be familiar with, was prepared in 2017 for the legislature, at, at the legislature's request. And it contained a lot of very interesting information, that, that some of it was developed by the committee that put together the report, some of it summarized research that had already been done. And part of that research demonstrated that over the last 10,000 years, there have been 41 earthquakes on the Cascadia Seduction Zone exceeding Richter VIII in magnitude and 19 that exceeded IX in magnitude. The average interval for those major earthquakes calculates out to be 250 years. The last one was January 26th, 9:00 PM, year 1700. Pretty interesting story how they know that, but that's 100 years before Lewis and Clark, 320 years ago about. So, something to ponder in terms of risk. What does that tell us about when the next one will happen? Well, not much. We don't know. We know some averages. Nobody really knows when the next one is gonna happen. I did notice an Oregonian article, I think it was in June of this year, where experts had revised some probability statistics and suggested that they now think, or at least this one expert did, that there's a 30, 30% chance of a 9.0 Richter earthquake within the next 50 years, which is sobering, thinking about a lifespan of these buildings and facilities being 100 years. And a 9.0 earthquake's been characterized variously as probably the worst natural disaster that has ever hit North America, ever. The violent shaking will be four minutes or more. I don't know how many of you may have experienced an earthquake. I've been in two or three really minor ones, and I can remember one that probably lasted 10 or 15 seconds, and it felt like forever. I can hardly imagine what strong shaking that knocks you down lasting four minutes must be like. I cannot even imagine that. In 2016, FEMA came up with a set of predictions of what the regional impacts will be, and you see that on your sheet. I won't repeat those. I think it's important, though, also to recognize that the Oregon Resilience Plan, using experts from our local area, predicted service recovery times, average service recovery times for key utilities and services to be as I've listed there. I'm gonna read those. Electricity from one, and, and this is in the Willamette Valley. By the way, if you're on the coast, it's much worse, but we're in the valley. One to three months for electricity, on average. That means some places it will be much longer. Water, sick, water, six to 12 months. Sewage, one to three years. Emergency shelters, 18 months. What good is an emergency shelter if it's not gonna be ready for 18 months after the event? Gotta wonder that. Schools, 18 months. So, changing these predictions, the committee thinks will require multiple efforts at many levels of government and the private sector. And we need to hope we have many decades to incrementally do what we can to get ready. If it happens next week, it's too late. So, opportunities we think the Board of Education should consider for the next bond really focuses on the elements of the next bond that will have new construction, new additions, new schools. Don't know, I don't really know what will be in the next bond. And in that sense, this school district can contribute to the community being more resilient when, not if, when that earthquake happens. And these features can be selected strategically. They can be included in new design with very, very marginal cost impact, very different than trying to retrofit an existing building with these kinds of features, very expensive, very difficult. So, you kinda have one time in a building's life, new building's life, to do it right. One time, at the beginning. Schools are also unique, and that's a special opportunity, I think, for school districts. They're distributed throughout communities, they're walkable when the transportation network isn't functioning at all for people who live in those communities. They have these large common spaces, as you all know, cafeterias and gymnasiums and other spaces that can shelter people, and they have large open spaces. If the transportation network is down, perhaps helicopter drop zones are possible to bring in supplies, tent shelters perhaps. The question then is, is beyond the seismic strength of the building, should the schools be designed with some resilient features to help the community? And, and there are a whole lot of things. I've listed some examples of things to consider that are on your sheet. I, I won't read through those. The benefits, the committee thinks, from pursuing a strategy like this are at least four. One is certainly enhanced safety for staff and students. Secondly, it, if you wanna just look at the building investment, it's a cheap, we think, insurance policy, one-time cost that covers 100 years of risk. Possibly support the community in an emergency as a benefit. And finally, being able to bring the buildings back online for their educational mission much sooner than otherwise would be possible. So, our bottom-line recommendation is that the board consider tasking the staff, working with some expert consultants, because this requires a bit of support beyond what most of us know by ourselves. But to develop a, a set of earthquake and resilient design standards and options, options for those standards, along with some relatively quantitative percent impact of cost, and present that back to the, the Board of Education for a decision, and to do it early during the planning phase for the next bond program. That concludes my remarks. I'd be happy to address any questions you might have.
In principle, I think this is a great idea. I, I used to run a neighborhood emergency team. So, you know, I saw the photos. I, yeah, it's gonna be horrifying when it happens. So, what, uh, my question is, you, you mentioned that we could perhaps do much of this for a relatively marginal increase in cost. And that is not what I have heard in the past. What I have heard is that to, to make these buildings really earthquake resilient, so that they will be not only hab- not only habitable but usable by the community after the event, it would require a very substantial increase in cost. So have things changed? It's been a while since I was a net member. Have things changed that much that we can now do some of these things for less than was the case 10 years ago? Or are you, is the difference the time horizon that you're talking about?
Great, great question. I think it all gets into the strategy of what's selected and what's not selected. For example, one could select to strengthen just the common areas and not the whole building. You could select to strengthen the structure of the entire building so that it will, you guarantee that it's repairable, even if there's some architectural damage, and then provide other features specifically for the common areas. And I think those are the kinds of choices that you would want the staff and the consultants to develop with the cost impacts so that you can make, you know, a strategic, really a strategic decision about cost benefit.
So I think we're already building at least one area in every school to a category four standard.
I think that's only the 2017 bond and not the 2012 project.
Although I think some of the 2012, I think Franklin and Grant were upgraded to category four for the, I think the cafeteria gym, something.
We can hold that thought for a moment till Dan Young comes up for his presentation when you're finished.
Thanks. I also want to agree with Director Moore. I think this is a really important conversation. I appreciate you putting it on the table and I think it's absolutely something we should be doing. I think one of the distinctions here really is new construction versus retrofitting. And I think you're right, retrofitting is extraordinarily expensive. And as an example, and I'm not an engineer, so I'm somewhat out of my depth, but when the city of Portland was redoing the Portland building, no matter what you thought of that building, $200 million is a lot to retrofit it. It is not going to be up to standards that you would expect in sort of a 9.0 earthquake. To do that would have made the project closer to $300 or $400 million. So you really, there is a cost benefit that needs to be taken into account for these projects. And the determination was, we want the building to stand. Whether it is inhabitable or not is probably not worth doubling the cost. For a school, it might be, but I really think that that second part, I mean, it's really easy for everyone to say, why aren't we building these buildings so that they'll withstand a 9.0 earthquake? It is possible that once, you know, we look at that, it would take a 30-year, you know, rebuild and modernization program and extend it to a 60-year. And that's a really hard question then to answer. And you touched on this at the beginning, there are different levels of, you know, obviously all of our buildings should stand, but the question isn't just do they stand, and a lot of them right now won't, and we know that. It's not just will they stand, but will they be inhabitable afterwards and sort of what are the gradations of a building. So, long way of saying, thank you for putting this on the table. It's absolutely something we should be talking about. I want to make sure we have the full cost benefit analysis when we consider these projects.
You know, if I could just add one more thing, one strategic thing regarding resilience that one can choose to do, and I don't know if this was incorporated in the current bond programs or not, but if you think about the common areas and where people are going to be, if that is wired, that those parts of the building are wired independently of the classrooms and so forth, the emergency generator that's there can power that area for longer. And it costs almost nothing to design the wiring that way. Plumbing, you can do the same thing so that there's water in the kitchen, so there's water in the showers. What you do about water supply is another problem, but there are things you can do. In one experience I had, we designed the plumbing system in the common areas with outside connections to the building. So if a tanker truck could get there, it can pump water into the building, just into those specific places. We decided in our case that storing water on site was too hard, too expensive. So there's, and it costs almost nothing to design and build the plumbing that way if you think about it upfront.
I would also like us to be talking to our community partners out there, especially the city and the county.
Indeed.
Because I think some resiliency plans have been made using some assumptions about PPS facilities that are probably not accurate. And it would be helpful if we could sort of collectively see the school buildings as a common benefit and get some assistance in paying for them from the city and the county and the state. I think that would be enormously helpful. It would certainly help us justify that, any cost increases.
We get a little bit from the state, but yeah.
Very little.
And partnerships are really important also just from the operational side, because I don't think it's reasonable to assume the school district can operate the emergency shelter. That's not what school districts are good at. You need the Red Cross, you need others to come in, but they have to know that the capabilities are there and probably do some practices and drills and exercises.
Thank you very much. Really important topic. Go ahead.
Were you wrapping it up?
Yeah.
Sorry, I wanted, and so Scott had something too. We were just waiting on turns. So I want to thank you for bringing this up. It's a very opportunistic time for us because as we get into the bond planning for next year, I think this will be a central question. And the issue for the school district, I think that we are going to need to wrestle with early because I felt we had a sort of unsatisfactory conclusion of it last time, which for the Bonds Superintendent Advisory Group had a discussion, quite a lengthy discussion about the trade-offs that were potentially involved of, so if you were going to, say five years from now, going to be at Benson, Madison, Lincoln, or Kellogg, you were probably, and your kids were going to be there, that was probably a good thing because you had a sort of 100 percent or a greater likelihood of sort of surviving what is, you know, a very, very challenging environment. However, if you're a student, it wasn't in one of those four buildings, it wasn't going to be a good thing. And the discussion debate that we had, which I don't think we came to a conclusion, frankly, we just needed at a certain point to refer the bond measure, but I think it would be well worthwhile to have it on the, this discussion at the front end. I'm looking for Claire and Dan who are going to lead that discussion. But this philosophical discussion within the school community because parents whose children were going to be in sort of our oldest, most fragile buildings, certainly wanted us to make investments now because their kids were going to be in those buildings. And sort of like, but we're investing in this, you know, putting all our eggs in, you know, four schools and the rest of the schools aren't going to have the potential upgrades that they need. And we didn't resolve that, how we resolved it, we made the decision primarily to invest in the four schools, but I think we need to have that conversation with the community early on versus at the last minute as we're putting together the bond package because parents have very strong feelings about the schools that their students are in and if their perception is they're unsafe and not going to survive the big one, they're going to want us to make the investment there. And we have a limited amount of dollars. So how do we most effectively, I think the question is going to be, how do we most effectively protect the most students in continuing our modernization? But I felt the way that we left at the end was unsatisfying, probably unsatisfying because we didn't have the time to have that discussion. So this is a great time to bring it up as we're in the front end of the bond planning.
So I'm going to agree with you. It's rehabbing that discussion. We hashed that over pretty well in 2012. And what we realized, and it was sort of a doing maintenance improvements as opposed to modernization. And the seismic upgrades that we have done to some schools do not get us to that this school will remain standing, everybody can leave safely standard. They're an improvement because we might have a 5.0 earthquake that they would help in. But the 9.0, they're, depending on the fault lines and where the earthquake is and all that stuff, I mean, we could have a serious earthquake and have some schools topple and some schools be relatively unscathed because of topography. It's unpredictable. But I think it's important to have that discussion. And in 2012, we decided to do minimal maintenance and maximum modernization. I'm still there, but yeah, having that discussion is important. Couple of other comments. Kevin, your comment about the 2012 bond, you know, basically, you know, landing on a dime. It's nice to have a couple of million left over, although there's still some things to be done. Grant Softball Field for one, Roosevelt for another. But, and you said we didn't do all the summer projects that were listed as up to. It's important to point out that the scope was enlarged substantially. The 2012 bond, initially the school capacity was 1,500 students. Just imagine Franklin right now, Grant opening up tomorrow with, yeah, with a 1,500 limit, it would be pretty crazy.
Yeah, I think we've made that point several times. I think we've
Just wanted to clarify.
The district has produced 200,000 square feet more in high school than was promised.
So there was a trade-off there. I think it was a pretty good trade-off.
Yeah.
So ditto. We're still waiting on the comparative study and echoing Andrew's comments on that. And just, you know, trying to figure out why construction costs are so much higher. I just did a cursory overview. What's been happening with construction wages in the tri-county area? The average wage has been going up by about 4% each of the last three years. That's not a huge amount and nowhere near close to the escalation. We know there's been materials increases certainly, but it's not, doesn't appear to be, again, that was just a cursory look, it's not labor costs that are driving this.
If I could just comment on that, we know what the construction inflation has been. I mean, we have that data and that doesn't explain the growth from the 2012 bond cost to the 2017. So we just need more information. That's what we need.
And finally, yes, to lessons learned. As far as I know, the only formal lessons learned that have been done on our bond program were around the community involvement in the design process. That was driven by Director Moore and myself when we were civilians a couple of years ago, but nothing around, formally around the entire construction project.
There has been some work done by staff and some considerable work. I think our comments are focused explicitly on the experience at Grant. We just shouldn't forget and move on from here. We need to learn what we can.
Because Grant looks a little more like a precursor to 2017 than the tail of 2012.
That's right.
Director DePass, did you?
Thanks.
I just had a question. Thank you for your updates. I'm new, so I'm trying to catch up to speed in terms of what the costs are, some of the other issues. And this is the second meeting I've been in when FEMA was mentioned, this time in regard to earthquakes. I think that, you know, as a district, we're kind of, you know, it's a moral imperative that we make sure that our schools are safe for kids. I'm sorry, I'm losing my question about this. Oh, I'll have to come back. I'm sorry, I had a question. I just can't.
So I think we do this a lot, but just to clarify, that the new schools are built so that in the event of a horrific earthquake, everybody inside will be able to leave safely with at best minor injuries or at worst minor injuries. The building might not be reusable, but everybody leaves safely with no casualties.
Director Moore, did you have something? Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Thank you for bringing forward this topic. We also have a pretty organized and active parent and community group that is really focusing on these issues of resilience and seismic safety. So they'll be an important part of that discussion as well.
I just remembered my question. And it's a comment that the earthquake, as Scott mentioned, is going to be, it'll hit different areas differently, but I hope that we have the wherewithal to take a look at the most vulnerable people in our community and that those would be schools that had higher poverty, more immigrant refugees, more languages spoken, more kids on free and reduced lunch, because chances are those families are going to be more burdened and have less insurance and fewer resources. And so if we could, as we're doing, going through a master planning project, deciding which schools get, you know, get done first and which ones get done last, I would hope that we would apply that equity lens and take a look at who's going to be the most impacted and the least likely to be resilient. Thanks. Good point.
And that was a specific point in the discussion on the, I want to say, 2014 Bond Committee that selected the schools to be master planned for the 2017. And that's one of the reasons Madison was.
Superintendent Gray, would you like to introduce the next discussion topic to follow on with the bond work? Thank you very much for your volunteer service.
I would. Thank you to our BAC representatives. I would like to invite up our chief operating officer, Mr. Dan Young, up here, who's going to provide us with his quarterly update on our bond program, which I think is a nice segue here.
Good evening, Superintendent and Directors. I will keep my comments even briefer. I think the superintendent's opening remarks covered some territory and the Bond Accountability Committee did as well. So I will keep it brief. In your packets tonight, you have information for the quarterly update that is substantially similar to the information that went to the Bond Accountability Committee in July. And that meeting is about three hours and I'm scheduled for 10 minutes, so I'll just hit some high points. As the BAC, Kevin noted that Marina Cresswell has taken over the senior director position of OSM and so we are very happy to have her on board and she's familiar with the program, having been here for about a year. I also want to thank Scott Perala for his time as the interim senior director, effectively wearing two hats for about six months. So appreciate his time. They are both unable to be here tonight, so you have me for one more meeting, it looks like. We covered some other projects that are completing. We have roughly two dozen projects that have completed or are being completed right now over the summer, including Grant and a number of other projects that we talked about as well. We also have roughly another two dozen projects that are somewhere in the design phase, not including our Safe Security Schools project, which will touch almost every single school with just a couple exceptions this school year. And that project has begun construction as well. And though, as noted before, this is the busiest summer that we have ever had for construction. I think we're also in a better position for school opening than we have ever been. So we're doing more and I think we're doing it better. So it's a real testament to all of the teams that are out there. Thought I would cover a couple of topics quickly that were brought up as discussion points. One is the report about the benchmarking. In January, we hired a professional consulting firm, Ryder Levitt Bucknell, to do a cost comparison analysis of comparing our 2012 projects to our current projects, what those costs are, comparing specifically, we asked them to compare the Lincoln High School to one of the Beaverton High Schools in new construction to compare to somewhat similar new construction high schools, and then comparing just our general square foot costs to other recent relevant projects in the area. So they have given us a couple of drafts. As Director Scott noted, that is very challenging. They have struggled to get to a point where it's apples to apples. I don't mean to imply that they're not good at this. It's just getting the right information, the right amount of detail to do apples to apples is a big challenge. So it has been an effort that's gone on considerably longer than we anticipated, but we do have the final draft and we expect that to finish up here in the next couple of weeks. I thought I would also touch on the seismic resiliency conversation. Certainly appreciate the comments tonight. And just for some clarification, the 2017 projects all have a space within the building that is designed to immediate occupancy, the level four. So for example, Madison is the entire new gym structure, not just the gym, but that structure. Kellogg, it is the common area spaces, also like the arts classroom and those spaces as well. So they all do have a space. The previous 2012 projects do not have, do not have those spaces. We also We also, one of the requirements is for all the new design is to have that space, and then to also look for other options of where we could increase resiliency. So the design teams have brought forward other potential options. Most of those have not been exercised because of costs. We're always looking to reduce costs as much as possible, and I don't know that, don't recall offhand some of those details, but some limited ones. Project Manager Jesse from Madison just noted that we did execute some of the plumbing recommendations that were discussed earlier at the Madison project, but that is what the standard is currently and in going forward. I think I'll stop there. I know I don't have a lot of time, and I'll just answer questions.
Director Bailey?
So we've got Lincoln, just about after the first year scheduled to-
We're going to mobilize after the first year, correct?
Which is a new structure.
Correct.
And Madison, which is a rebuild, and that is being demolished as we speak. To make both of those up to level four, which is, will be occupiable after a major quake. It goes back to Director Scott's point. Do you have a ballpark what that cost would be to bring each of those to a complete level four?
The full facilities?
Yeah.
I do not offhand. We can take a look and at least get a rough ballpark of that.
I'm not asking you to do any work on this, but I just think it's interesting that the BAC is saying, "Spend less, but spend more." Just kidding.
I had a brief question about what value engineering activities are going on with Madison now. They've got a, what do you have, a $6 million budget gap currently, so?
Correct. We will have, in two weeks, we'll actually be back here to do a presentation, so you'll get more detail on that. I'll give you a little high-level review, and I will ask Jesse, if she wants to come down, and provide some specific details. So Jesse Steiger, Senior Project Manager on the Madison project, is here tonight. And so, similar to all of our projects, we do pretty robust value engineering, specifically on the Madison project. We hired a third-party general contractor to come in during, I think DDs it was, and do a constructibility review, so get another set of eyes on the project and say, you know, "Take a look at design, you're professionals, what is it that we might be missing here?" On Madison, we brought a lot of our key subcontract rates on early, so they were able to assist us during the design process, and that helped us bring those design downs. We always have third-party cost estimates, so we're able to review the different cost estimates, so we can see where our costs are aligning in between the projects. So those are some things that we do standard, not to mention, we hire design firms whose specialty typically is K-12 construction. We hire contractors, who typically their specialty is K-12 construction. So the teams are really filled with robust professionals, that this is what they specialize in, we're able to get a lot of expertise out of them. So I'll let Jesse provide any additional details you'd like.
Regarding, regarding value engineering specifically?
Yes.
Just how you're addressing the budget gap?
Oh, sure. So we've been chipping away at it. It's currently about 4.1 million over what we were expecting. Just today, we had another meeting to look at how much we're going to be metering the building and looking at energy use. Like, there might be another 100,000 in that, like, we are continuing that process. At some point, though, we have to draw a line in the stand and execute the contract, but we still have a number of ideas we're pursuing, and that process just keeps going. We did a lot to try and manage the risk of the project, so we, you know, look at some of the issues that Grant ran into, for instance. I went through everything, Ingalls Change Order that Grant had, I looked at how, you know, some of the problems I looked into, and how we could maybe mitigate that. And we've made some really specific changes to mitigate risk, so that once we start construction, maybe we would run into some fewer issues. So there's a wide variety of things. I've got like three pages of notes on how to mitigate risk and the things we've been doing, and so I think that's going to be one of the items in the board packet in two weeks as well.
We'll look forward to that conversation.
Do you know offhand the size of the contingency for the Madison project?
Yes, it's about $15 million in owner contingency right now.
Okay, and is that consistent with other projects we've done, or have we been increasing that contingency as we've been seeing construction costs rise?
It's consistent. It would be, it's about 8% of construction, or it's 8% of total project cost going into construction. That's a little bit lower than what we've started with traditionally, but we're also setting this contract a little bit later than normal, which should have helped mitigate a lot of risk. And so it's a calculated move, there's some science behind it, but it is a little bit lower than we would like.
Okay.
And just a little more detail on that strategy. So we've got roughly 15 million of the owner's contingency outside the GMP contract. The GMP contract that's going to be coming forward has another 6 million in there that we call contractors' contingency. It's truly four specific items that we run into. Because that total 20, 21 million is lower than what we would like to see at this point in time, we have program contingency outside the individual projects, and that totals approximately $20 million right now. So we've effectively earmarked 5 million was where we would really like to be at to supplement to the Madison project if and when needed. If it's not needed, that, those funds will never be transferred over, but that's what those program contingency funds are there for. And as we forecast the cost for the full program, we have been forecasting spending that $20 million, and the way that that structure is set up is, it is specific for effectively the four modernization projects.
Can I just finish you off on that point? I appreciate that background. I think it's really important to keep the pressure on keeping the cost down, and it's really easy when these contingencies are good, and you're right, they're not huge. It's really easy to start saying, "Well, but we've got that if we need it," and take the pressure off. But I would really like to see that continued effort, and even potentially team up some really big decisions, right, to keep the project on, you know, on budget. And sometimes that means we just can't do what we wanted to do originally, so.
We have actually a pretty decent-sized list of alternates as well, and that there are things that we, you know, if we do go forward and there is a decision that, you know what, you absolutely have to stay in budget no matter what, we could defer working on the fields, we could defer working on the stadium. There are options, they're not options anybody in the school community likes. It's probably a board decision to choose to do that, but we have a list, and we've got a timeframe of when we have to make decisions, so that's data we can be feeding you throughout construction, so that we can make informed decisions about where the budget stands.
And I'm assuming the Bond Oversight, or Bond Accountability Committee weighs in on these, on this conversation? Do they provide suggestions through this value engineering process?
We provided a presentation to the Bond Accountability Committee about the process that we went through. So the team went through, I'm not sure how many weeks, maybe six weeks, of relatively structured value engineering process, where the entire project team comes in, and I just want to clarify, that's not a handful of people, that's dozens of designers and engineers and consultants that go through this, and with our stakeholders. And a group that all the project teams rely on to help make decisions that the district would want to make is the steering committees, in this case, the Madison Steering Committee. And what that is, is a group that's basically a cross-section of leadership across the district, also has board representation, and has subject matter experts in the room. So when we're looking to make a decision, like a tough decision, we often rely on the steering committee to help give us guidance versus going, if it's a situation that needs to go to the full board.
I'm just going to follow on this comment, because this is a topic I wanted to raise. Appreciate all the work on the value engineering and really looking at innovative ways to deliver the project at its current budget. But in the overview that we received about just the status update, it had a number of things that were under consideration that ultimately were decided not to be pursued, that were, would have changed the scope of the project and produced some savings. And some of those appeared to be ones that were based on the ed specs, and I asked you, Dan, whether or not, if there was change in the ed specs, that it would come back to the board, and your response was that, once we approve the master plans, they don't go back to the board for its scope changes unless there's a material change from the approved master plan. And I guess I'm concerned that we, as a board, although it was the previous board, made some decisions on sort of equity, on educational specifications, both outside of the buildings and inside the buildings, that we agreed when we realized that the budget was going to be more than was anticipated. We made a decision to build the schools that we promised the community we would build, that would be equitable, and that would have cost implications, but we weren't going to build reduced schools or different inequitable schools and hit the target, which is why we went over. So my question, I'm a little bit concerned when I hear things might be deferred and things that we had considered would be sort of base across all of our schools, that we knew it would cost more money, but that that was important, that whatever neighborhood you lived in, you were going to have a similar, to the extent possible, we'd stick to the ed specs. So when you say, unless there's a material change, is, what's your definition of that? Is that a deviation from the ed specs? And I consider a deferral to be deviation. I mean, I think the Roosevelt community with their CTE would say, like, "We don't need it, we're still waiting for that." So I'm concerned that deferrals ultimately may become, they don't ever happen. So I'm interested in sort of the criteria in which something would come back to the board and for a discussion before those decisions would be made. Sorry, that was a long question.
Yeah, that's a great question. I'll back up a little bit and answer a little bit with process. So when any project, when a cost estimate comes in at any point in time, and it is higher than the previous or higher than the budget, the design team, the project team, goes through process to identify, "How can we get back into budget?" In this particular case, they went through a process and identified, I think it was somewhere in the ballpark of $40 million of potential VE or just scope reductions. After reviewing the process and with stakeholders and going to the steering committee, 18 million of that, it looks like those are good changes that we can take, we can reduce costs, and we can keep the program, and we can keep what the master plan shows for the scope. So those were accepted, and that design was changed and moved forward with that. Going beyond that would have been a change to the master plan and the ed specs, so that would have needed board approval. So that's where we had the discussion, is do we try to reduce scope below what was approved in the master plan, come to the board and get that approved, or do we think what the direction is? Because from the project side, we don't have a lot of opinions on this. We are trying to make the decisions that we think decision-makers would make. We're trying to reflect back what we learned. And so, and again, using the steering committee as a sounding board, I'm saying, "No, we think we need to hold the line with the master plan and the ed specs and proceed forward with the full design, and then mitigate those costs and manage that risk." So that was the decision. Had we elected to proceed forward with a deferral or reduction of scope, then we would have come to the board for that approval, because that's a material change.
So you would consider a deferral as a material-
Yes.
Change, okay, great, thanks.
Yeah, I want to thank Jesse for inviting me to sit in on some of those meetings, and I'm not a construction professional, but I can assure you that the agendas were dominated by value engineering. That was like 90% of what we talked about. And again, my opinion when asked on that was, yeah, hugh to the ed specs, it would be incredibly unfair to, you know, put off doing the fields or the stands or some of the other things that were on the list.
Just on this point real quick, I just want to put on the table that there is an opportunity cost, and there's an inequity of making the decision to do what we're doing even as costs go up. And so I just, you know, I'm not disagreeing with previous board direction on this, to sort of maintain those specs so that we have equality among the schools. As long as the board has accepted the fact that doing that, even as costs escalate, means you're putting off other projects for students, and there's a huge inequity there of students who won't get a rebuilt school for an extra two, four, six, maybe even 10 years. So there is inequity on both sides of this, so I don't want to pretend that we're adhering to an equity principle by making sure that every school has exactly the same. We also are deferring future and, you know, potentially a whole generation of students that don't benefit from some of these things. So there's an opportunity cost on both sides, and I'd like to make sure as we have these conversations, we keep that in mind as well.
Important point. I want to move this conversation along. Director Moore, closing comment?
Well, I have a question. So are you seeing, on the summer projects, the smaller summer projects, are you seeing the same kind of cost escalation in those projects that you, we're seeing in the major modernizations?
Without having a lot of specific data, in short answer is yes. I know in particular, our roofing projects have gone up significantly. A lot of projects, not just ours, other than we talk around, it's what ends up driving a lot of cost is competition, where we would love to get five or six or 10 bids on something, we're getting one or two.
Or none.
It's just, or none. And certainly, when you build larger projects, you build it in smaller pieces, and we have those problems as well. And that's something, and that's something our professional cost estimators are telling us as well, it's just this, the lack of competition, the lack of availability out there is driving up these costs. So yes, we are seeing it, it might not be as acute, but we're definitely seeing a lot of cost increases. Roots in particular have gone up a lot.
So is this a question of lack of capacity in the marketplace to respond to what we're trying to do?
That is a lot of it, and the report, the benchmark report that we will share does talk about that, and I don't, I'll let people kind of draw some of their own conclusions, but in the executive summary, they point to a lot of labor shortages and just resource shortages as cost drivers for what we're seeing in our bids.
It's just curious if there's labor shortages, why-
Right.
-the average wage for construction workers isn't going up by 10% a year.
And we heard, we actually even had a meeting with some construction folks, and their assertion was that there is not a labor shortage of construction workers, and they were surprised when we, they were surprised that we were surprised at hearing that. So I'm really curious, like, what's, I think we're all eager to see that study.
Sure, should be so.
All right.
So I just want to note that in the BAC report, there was a note that the Franklin final evaluation hadn't been finished, and it's my understanding that that's going to be done in the next couple of weeks, so we'll have that completed.
Correct, and the Roosevelt one will be done soon as well.
And that Roosevelt one as well.
Great. Thank you so much, and just kudos to all the work that got accomplished over the summer. We have just such a brief window, we usually think about it as just the time when our kids are out having fun, but it is just, they are in those buildings the minute those children leave and are there until the day before they come back, so that's a ton of work going on, and good job, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Superintendent Guerrero, we are going to revisit our discussion of board goals. This will be our third iteration where we've been homing in on exactly what we want to focus on, and could you please introduce this item for us?
Yes, I'm glad we're continuing the conversation. We knew this would be an iterative process. We're picking up, I think, where the board left off its discussion on what is it that we want to measure so that we can articulate the specific SMART goals, which is why you didn't necessarily see them listed out tonight. But we're going to turn the mic over to, and put him right to work, Dr. Brown, to walk us through this evening's conversation.
After a very sobering conversation, given that I just moved to the side of a dormant volcano. So again, first and foremost, I do want to thank the board for its ongoing work around this, and you'll notice that today that the metrics that I'm going to discuss are very similar to those that you presented and discussed on the 13th. And the reason for that is, we effectively hit pause for a moment because we have data that's coming, the new baseline data from 1819, which would set the stage for a three-year plan and a three-year expectation. But that data is under embargo, and so rather than replicating 1718 data, which is not the true bench, the benchmark, not the baseline for that, I extracted that data, and you'll see that instead, I stuck with what the board had discussed, which was an average of about a 3% a year growth. So I heard you talk about maybe an escalating 2, 3, 4, but I kept it as an average of a 3% growth. 3% growth. But I did think that this was an opportunity while we're in this sort of limbo, waiting for data to be released from an embargo, to talk about some principles associated with setting goals for the board. Things that I think can inform SMART goals, because as is, the discussion around the goals has focused on some of the attributes of SMART goals quite a lot, and maybe not quite as much on some of the other attributes of SMART goals. And I'm not sure that necessarily talked about how the SMART goals fit together in a ladder moving forward. And so I want to talk about some of those big ideas and how they fit with the goals that already exist. And then really sort of move into a conversation around the importance for continuous improvement. That if we're talking about performance management and if we're really talking about this larger vision of what a portrait of a graduate can be, there aren't metrics out there that adequately captured the breadth of that. So we're going to have to start someplace and then build things out over time. And that's part of that tension that I want to get at when I talk about SMART goals. I've seen a lot of attention spent to specificity. I've seen a lot of attention spent to whether or not something's measurable and whether or not the timeframe. What about relevance? So if we talk about the portrait of a graduate, relevance is really important. I mean, this is something the community came forward and said, hey, this is, we want something over and above a diploma. We want to be able to communicate ways that our students are leaving high school, prepared to go into a post-secondary environment with some demonstrable skill that reflects a diversity of ways that kids can show up, a diversity of interests. So that's the relevance piece and that's the tension, because the stuff that's easily measurable, that's S-Back, that's tests, that's et cetera, we need to flesh out something over time that encompasses a larger picture as we move forward. And so I just want to keep that tension in mind as we talk. So talking about big ideas, I think it's important that the goals be sequenced in a ladder. If the objective in the end is the portrait of a grad, then each of those goals should work in a logical ladder upward towards that, so that students, as they're moving through school, understand students and their families and the community writ large, understand whether or not students are moving towards that ultimate goal of a portrait of a grad. And it should be sequential. So, you know, these things build in sort of a, from a foundation upward and they build up in a logical, ladder-ing fashion. They're not separate. They, one builds to another, that builds to another, that builds to another. The last time I looked, on the 13th, you guys had three goals that you were talking about, and that covered elementary school. You had stuff for K-5. You had a nice goal that I thought was becoming more expansive in terms of thinking about heading off towards the portrait of a grad for grade eight. But there wasn't anything articulated for high school. I think every school needs to see itself in this. I can't imagine the board having a series of goals and the high schools not being able to see themselves in that work in a very explicit fashion. And so you'll hear me talk about that, that every school, as we're aligning their work in the system, internal performance management, those goals that we're setting with individual buildings should scaffold up in a very logical fashion to the board goals and the community goals writ large. Finally, really want to talk about growth. A lot of the goals have been framed in terms of proficiency, and that can have some perverse incentives in it. I mean, to be quite blunt, yes, Director Bailey, I heard you loud and clear. I think we really do need to be speaking about growth and student growth and what it means to grow all students and what it means to differentially grow students. We have to have differential outcomes or expectations for students to be able to close gaps. It will not happen if we simply have the same expectations for all. So every student should be expected to grow, and as we move forward, we should be able to speak with students and their families about their growth expectations irrespective of where they are along the way. Moving on, if every student's expected to grow, it's not saying that we don't have a common expectation for students. We do. We have a common target for students to achieve. We've got this portrait of a graduate where we want a common expectation for all students to excel, and it's something over and above a high school diploma. I mean, it's wonderful that this system has moved its graduation rate. It's wonderful that we've closed gaps on graduation, but we all know in the 21st century, as we're moving forward, graduation's necessary but not sufficient. Graduation doubles a student's lifetime earning potential, but wow, going on for post-secondary training can double it again. So we know it's a necessary step but not sufficient. And the community writ large has said, we want something more for that. So when we're talking about more and we're talking about closing gaps for students, we're really then talking about differential allocation of resources. We're talking about what it means to change instruction to systematically meet the needs of students who have been historically underperforming over time. This is changing classroom instruction in a very real, amenable fashion as we move forward. It's also something that doesn't happen overnight. And so we can set that goal out there as a start point. This sort of throws me off. I saw myself over there and then I go to, it was the PowerPoint. So a little bit of side movement there. I'm going to get used to this in a moment. First earthquakes, now moving pictures. Anyhow, there is a commitment then to align resources to make this happen. It's a commitment to create the change in terms of instruction, to make this happen, to be able to close those gaps. And again, it doesn't happen overnight. It's a continuous improvement cycle that we will have to revisit time and time again to be able to get there. So moving forward, again, everything anchors to the portrait of the grad. Everything should ladder up to that. Some of this will look pretty familiar to you. Again, I decoupled it from the 1718 data because the 1718 data isn't the baseline. We will reintroduce the 1819 data as we move forward and we talk about this, and we can talk about, okay, we start here at the start of third grade and the 1819 year, three years out, we expect to be here based on a 9%, if that's the consensus. You can see that, again, this goal is one that's commonly used around the country. This is a fairly common stepping stone for students, looking at that transition from students learning to read to reading to learn. If you haven't got this by the end of third grade, start of fourth grade, then you're falling behind and school becomes more about remediation than talking about moving forward. Same thing in fifth grade. The fifth grade metric that we talked about, or that you guys have talked about previously, makes a ton of sense to me. Again, as kids are leaving fifth grade, they're heading off towards middle school, do they have the prerequisite numeracy skills to be prepared to enter into pre-algebra so that they have opportunities to pursue advanced mathematics in a secondary environment? We all know that having advanced mathematics provides greater opportunities for students and allows them a greater set of choices as they pursue post-secondary environments. The eighth grade portrait, this language is unchanged from the last time. We didn't have any, there was no data anchored to this yet, so the language has remained the same. I would expect, again, in a developmental fashion, we will initially anchor this to what we have. But then we'll have to talk about how we're going to build it out so that as we're thinking about kids going into high school, and we want them to start contemplating how they're going to pursue some sort of additional certification or some sort of other evidence that they're post-secondary ready while they're in high school, well, where do kids start thinking about that? They think about that in middle school. They start thinking about what their opportunities are, and they start exploring those. And we need to capture that. And part of what I've heard over time is we also wish to build agency. We want our students and our families engaged in that process. And again, middle schools, where that agency starts to happen and it starts to inform where I go for high school, what I start thinking about pursuing in high school, and how I start building that portfolio or resume for when I leave high school that demonstrates not only did I get my diploma, but maybe somewhere along the way, I picked up a seal of bi-literacy, or I've picked up one or more AP courses, dual credit, et cetera. Finally, again, I took the liberty of reintroducing into the mix a metric that would be connected to high school. And again, if we're talking about portrait of a grad, what does that look like? What are some of the indicators? And at this point, I included things in that that are already existing, things that I know that we could likely capture the data for and we could build a baseline from to be able to talk about, here's where we are, and if we increase participation rates in CTE or AP or IB, et cetera, we can track whether or not students are picking up additional certifications over time. This is something that we can put numbers to, and again, I think is closer to the vision of a portrait of a grad than where we are. Again, all of the above will require iterative work. I don't believe that there's anything that we can, any rabbit that I can pull out of the hat, or anyone else can, that will capture the breadth of that idea at this point in time. So we'll have to work to that over time. So goal one, and I just want to talk about this in context, and I've got an illustration here. So rather than reading back through this, again, this is the same goal. I've just extracted the baseline data. You don't have the hard start end on this. Understand that, again, when we have the data released from the embargo, we'll put it in there. This goal actually has sort of two prongs to it, and this is something I think worth talking about. So one, there's a raising the bar component in this, but there also is a closing the gap component as well. There are some challenges with this, and I really want to spend a little bit of time talking about that. And I put this in as an illustration. I am not suggesting by any means that we're only focusing on the average in the African-American and the Yale students. If you put every student subgroup in there with a line, it gets really crowded and complicated and a little hard for an illustration. My point in this was to show you, okay, here's where the average is, here's where approximately African-American students are, here's where second language learners are. And if we apply the metrics that have been discussed to date, and requiring that on average, students show a 3% increase over three years, and that we cut the gap for lower performing groups between that average and the lower performing group, that is incredibly ambitious for these two subgroups. Matter of fact, more ambitious and questionable in terms of achievable than I think anything I've seen, because we're literally talking about tripling the proficiency rate for second language students and doubling the proficiency rate for African-American students in two years. Now, we all wish to see gaps close, but again, tension between, we want something that's ambitious, but we want it to be achievable in terms of a goal. And right now, when I look at the history of the data for this system, the history of the data for the state on S-Back, the trend's going the other way. So we have to turn a corner first and then talk about closing gaps. So I just wanted this to be an illustration. I think it captures some of those big principles. This is clearly a first step on a ladder. We want students to acquire reading skills so that they can read to learn moving forward. It captures that. Every K-8, every K-5 elementary building in the system can see themselves in this. And we can clearly articulate growth expectations for students on this. It also, I think, as we move forward and we talk about measures associated with this, I deliberately picked a picture of kindergartners for a reason. I know those aren't third graders.
Because they're adorable.
They're always adorable. My favorite classroom to go into in any elementary building is kindergarten classroom. No offense to any other teachers, just kindergarten classrooms are really fun. So, but picking the kindergarten classrooms was there for a reason, because when we're talking about this in terms of continuous improvement, if we wait to third grade to measure this, we've already lost. We really need to be talking about cohorts of students as they enter kindergarten, how we close those gaps through third grade, and how do we measure that cohort over time? That same thinking will apply to the fifth grade model, and we, again, need to be thinking about how do we track the growth of students over time? How we grow every student, not just kids that are around a proficiency bubble? That doesn't serve anybody in the long run. So our lagging metric, the one that will likely be connected or has to date been connected with the board metrics, as you guys have discussed them, has been S-Back. Certainly can do that. We have some leading metrics that can help us know whether or not we're closing those gaps over time. The MAP data and WA will help us with that. But I think overall, as we move forward and we have continuous improvement with this, we really want to be tracking cohorts of students and whether or not they're on track to meet this goal, because we do not want to wait till third grade for that. Your fifth grade goal, same thing, same logic. S-Back will be the, likely the lagging measure associated with it, it's one you've been discussing, but we'll be looking at our kids closing those gaps over time, and we'll likely leverage our NWA data for that. One of the beauties of that assessment, I was so pleased to see that we're moving in that direction, is it allows for vertical scaling, which means that I can track a student's growth irrespective of grade without having to do some fancy math to say, oh, does the third grade score mean the same thing as the fourth grade score? Eighth grade.
Can I ask a quick question before you?
Sure. Or perhaps we could let me get through the whole thing today and then put some questions to it then. Eighth grade, again, a little bit more comprehensive in terms of how we're looking at it. Initially, again, I would expect in terms of lagging summit of measures, what's happening on S-Back in eighth grade? That would be a start point for that. We also have some measures of social-emotional learning. Again, when I think about, is a student ready to go on to high school? Well, we want to know that they're academically ready. So are they meeting the goals on S-Back in both reading and math? Good start point. What about social-emotional learning? Where are they with that? Because wow, middle school teachers and principals are special people, because middle school students are special people at that point in life. Social-emotional learning and really capturing those skill sets and being prepared to go on to high school, it's important, and we often don't talk about that. We talk about reading and math, but we don't often talk about social-emotional learning. I believe we have some components here that we can build into that metric as is. In terms of continuous improvement, again, how do we start measuring a portfolio of interests? How do we measure student agency? How do we start thinking about whether or not our eighth graders are poised to enter high school to develop that, again, set of skills? Are they exploring opportunities? Are they beginning to build out that with their family as they move forward? And finally, the career in college readiness, which I think you guys had had an iteration of it before, and I just sort of reinserted it with a little bit more language. Again, what are kids walking away with over and above a diploma? And how do we value the different ways kids can express their interests and talents? So how do we value kids who are walking away from our arts program, prepared to go into some sort of post-secondary training connected to the arts? Or some sort of post-secondary opportunity connected to the arts? How do we, again, map out these different pathways for kids and give them credit or acknowledge the skills and preparation that they've accomplished over and above a diploma? So again, really pleased to be here, pleased to see that there's a foundation of work that is already in place. Wanted to provide some context for how I think we think about the relationship between metrics, rather than seeing them as separate from one another, and really trying to get folks to think a little bit about the tension between the relevance of a metric that gets at what a portrait of a grad is versus maybe a more routine metric that's easier to get at, but doesn't necessarily capture the breadth or depth of what we're really trying to accomplish and what the community has said that they want graduates to have. So with that, I thank you for letting me sort of go through this completely, and I'd be more than happy to take any questions that you may have.
I have a question. I have two questions.
Sure.
When will the data be out of embargo? Did you say that and I missed it?
We're expecting that in the middle part of September.
Okay. You did say that and I.
I actually didn't say that, but.
Oh, well, hey. And then the other thing is, you know, we had the students at the beginning of the meeting give their public comment, and they talked about, you know, the leadership.
Yeah, that's not cool.
Yeah, it was very cool. The leadership they've done with the climate strike and getting the city permits. And so as part of the fourth goal, I'd be interested in seeing how a leadership component could be part of that as far as students doing those kind of activities.
Shocking that I'd want leadership be part of it.
Or in the eighth grade.
Or in the eighth grade as well, but I think those were all.
Or both high school students that we saw for the climate strike.
There have been middle grades students involved as well.
Yes.
Maxine?
I was going to say the leadership component is really important to the graduate portrait as well, but I also think that with the PSAT and AP and IB, I don't think those are as important when it comes to this. I know that it's an important, like, milestone for students when it comes to taking tests, but when it comes to like career readiness and like readiness for life, I think that leadership skills and also like, you know, business classes and classes that are more electives are important as well when it comes to that, because I know that I hate standardized testing so much, and I know that a lot of students struggle with that too. And so having that, you know, I take AP classes, but I don't necessarily, my scores aren't very good, even though I do well in the class. And so like if that's reflective. And so like, if that's reflecting my, onto my like readiness, I don't necessarily think that that's true, because you can do really well in a class or in one subject, but it doesn't reflect onto a test. You know what I mean? So like in the PSAT, like I do really well in English, but I didn't do very well on the English part of the test. So like when it comes to that, I don't necessarily think it's the best measure to.
I think our hope, Maxine, was to have a variety of ways.
Okay.
So it's not that you have to like, I mean, I think it'd be ridiculous to have to be good at CTE, art, AP, IB, and PSAT and leadership. It's saying there are multiple, you know, everybody looks kind of different.
Yeah.
And we, like, on this board, we have different skills. And so it's that idea of having multiple options to measure how someone would be successful. And you are an incredible example of leadership right here, right?
Off the charts.
Yeah. And so, you know, your AP tests maybe aren't as good an indicator of your readiness, but this totally is.
Okay. Sorry, I just also still don't completely understand all of this yet, so.
Yeah. No, sorry.
Thank you, Director Lowery, for your clarification.
So I think, kind of following up Maxine's comments, the first two goals are pretty cut and dried. The other two, I think, were really breaking the mold on. And I think there, this could be, and I'm just, if I'm out of my lane here, say so, but my, I'm thinking this would be a, like a planning engagement year on both those goals, that we could engage students and teachers in the development of those over the coming year, because I don't think, I don't think we're prepared to take those on right now. And that, I think it would be, if I were a teacher, I'd be really excited to see some of these goals, not necess, and I kind of agree with Maxine, I think with the high school one needs to be fleshed out a bit. But I think, you know, coming up with some really specific benchmarks around that that aren't test scores would be pretty exciting for teachers, and, you know, that then gets backwards mapped onto less plans and curriculum. I think that's a great opportunity to develop collaboration and engagement and bring that educational vision to life, that, I think that's a great opportunity for us.
I think that's exactly right, Dr. Bailey, and that's how we've been discussing it. It's a harder, it's a harder thing to grasp and to quantify, but just because it's more complex doesn't mean we shouldn't really go for it. And it's a nice sort of next step from the visioning process to bring together a group of people, educators, youth, to talk about, how do you create a portfolio process? How do we make clear to entering middle schoolers what that capstone sort of project is going to look like, where they have to reflect on their growth along a number of areas? We would want a bunch of educators to really help us weigh in on what that would look like. And so that will take a little bit of time, and what's something we can use for current eighth graders versus incoming sixth graders that will have a little bit more ramp and time to sort of develop that. But if you can imagine doing a citywide process where we would work with our middle grades teachers so that we're calibrated and, you know, there's a certain level of rigor that we would expect in these presentations, we think we would be implementing something that isn't being done anywhere, that could be really exciting work for us.
Teachers, yes, and students, because if you get students buying into, oh, I know I am doing this and this is real life stuff, not a friggin' test score. Yeah.
And I think, Director Bailey, that's a nice segue to the next part of this process, which, once we adopt the goals, to then, staff goes to work on articulating the strategies, and then we land on the metrics by which we're going to measure how those strategies are doing.
I think that's right. I think we're trying to land on the concept of what we want to measure. I mean, I think writing a SMART statement is the easy part. It's what are the things that we want to value as a public school system?
So I want to talk a little bit about the sort of, the concept of the ladder, because I really like the interconnectivity of it. But just speaking from personal experience, the ladder can also kill you, because if you're not on the ladder, you're never going to reach the goal. And the problem is if you're not reading at third grade and you're not projected to ever read at third grade, how could you ever possibly meet the fifth grade goals or the eighth grade goals? And so I'm interested in your thoughts of, you have the traditional ladder, which, you know, we hope you have this natural progression by setting goals that show this natural projection that are sequenced and interconnected. But for those kids who aren't meeting those goals, what is, you know, sort of their catch-up ladder? And how do we measure that? Because, you know, just speaking from experience, you have a third grader who doesn't, you know, read at third grade, and then at fourth grade, they're not at fourth grade, and then it just, it goes on and on. And I think we've got a lot of those kids, and then you have this sort of quiet desperation of families and their students of, we're not on the ladder, and there's no, you know, there's no pathway that's going to get them back on the ladder. So how, how do we, using goals, get students back on those ladders? And, you know, by just, I guess I look at, so if you go back to that chart you had with the really aggressive goals that you mentioned, we still have students who, a pretty big group of students who aren't at those benchmarks. So how is it that we're going to measure whether those students are ever going to catch up?
So just as a point of clarification, I don't believe I'm hearing you say that we would have different expectations. We want a common expectation of high performance, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I'm just saying, but clearly there's not a pathway, if you're not on the ladder, for a lot of students to get ever caught up.
Which is why I've come back to this, at least on the start of this, when I talk about principals, why I think it's so important to talk about growth and to talk about cohorts and monitoring a cohort of students over time. Because the type of closing the gaps that we're talking about will not happen overnight, and it will require a realignment, again, of curriculum resources to get that done. It's not easy work, and again, the types of goals that I've seen laid out here to occur across multiple subgroups of systems to close gaps at the rate that I haven't seen happen yet. So it's incredibly ambitious in terms of what's laid out. And again, going back to third grade, for example, if you wait to third grade to measure it, you're already too late. And so it really is rethinking, looking at a student's growth over time for multiple years, and how do we support students over time to close those gaps?
So recognizing that this is sort of the metric that we believe if we're focused on PK3 and literacy development, and what a rich program of that work would look like, I mean, it's really more of a lattice approach, and you include all the ingredients that we know make a difference for developing students' literacy, probably our chief academic officer could come up here and help elaborate on this, but when you're placing the focus on those primary grade level teachers' support and development, the evidence-based supports and interventions, the rich literature, the extended literacy opportunities, the librarians, you know, go down the list, to get to a point to where as a school system, we could clinically diagnose reading behavior in any individual student very clinically and know how to very strategically not just address those developing literacy skills, but also engage our kids in exciting ways, because we know that, you know, third grade is a bit late, they're not going to be able to access content if they don't have those foundational literacy skills, that they're already walking into kindergarten with that opportunity gap present. And so this is why early education is going to be so critical, that they are focusing on those literacy developmental skills to have that strong foundation. But the exciting part is to really rally the school system around those primary grades and all the ingredients that we would want to see in the teaching and learning environment, which is exciting work for us. Dr. Valentino?
Thank you. Good evening, Professor President, Superintendent, Directors. So as the Superintendent articulated, a focus as we move from the initial implementation of our GVC that includes our scope and sequence and units of study, more broadly as a foundation, we're now moving towards targeting, and in area, one of the many areas that we're targeting is our early learners. And so we're, consider the concept of a comprehensive literacy system that looks at foundational skills as early as preschool to third grade. Inside of that, you will also find efforts to address dyslexia, right, in a comprehensive way, but also create a balanced approach to literacy. So all of those components are going to be working in alignment and in coherence towards making sure that by third grade, our students have acquired the necessary literacy skills to access the rigorous curriculum that exists in the third grade, which is a very challenging space for students third grade. And so we know that reaching, as one of the things that Dr. Brenn has said, waiting till third grade is very light. And so being clear about that, what we have to do, we have to start as early as we can. So one of the things that the Superintendent is really pushing for as well is expanding services for early learners academically. And so we really need to do that. But beyond that, we really need to look at our kindergartners, and how are they performing? And how are we measuring the progress and growth over time? So that we can track that, so that when they get to third grade, there's a level of confidence that we have, that our students are actually meeting third grade standards. So that when they get to the fifth grade, we know that they've accessed enough understanding in the core content to actually meet the mathematics standards, which are quite rigorous in the fifth grade, because they're preparing them for pre-algebra work in math, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. So it is, there is a continuum of work that we're working on, but it was really important to create a foundation so that we can then begin to target early learners, elementary grade, middle school, and high school. And then in our partnerships with our colleges and universities and our support services that will be available for students' career, that we actually create a through line that works P to career.
So this really is a pedagogical capacity issue to get to a point to where we can almost guarantee, there are some methods for accelerating literacy development in our students, but if we're going to run across the system, the kind of inclusive environments where the educators can differentiate for students, whether they have a special need or they're second language learners, or they need to have culturally responsive strategies, all of those things in their toolkit that they're prepared to deploy for whoever those diverse learners are in front of them. And so there's some specific ingredients that we'll have to work towards as an organization having the capacity for across every one of our elementary schools.
This is something that I've already heard anecdotally from several teachers after the professional development prior to the start of the school year, that there really is this intentional focus on differentiated instruction for every single student.
And Director Brenn, what I'm excited about is goal three, and I think about the kids I worked with last year, and some of them are not, they're entering fourth grade not having met reading level for third grade, and they'll be sixth graders in 2022, and thinking about if they haven't caught up to grade level, hopefully they have, what this does for them, this portfolio, starting sixth grade with this sense of like, leadership, health and wellbeing, arts, pre-CTE, because while those students do struggle in reading and need that extra support, I think there's also something here that's really important to validate the learning that they're doing, the expertise they're already bringing in these other areas. And that while we, I think we all agree that reading and math are fundamental and what, you know, the heart of those first two goals are, there's so much more to students, and that's where I feel like, you know, you talked about if they're not on the ladder, but I think if, you know, those students, if we look at that 40% for our black students in three years, that's 60% that aren't on grade level, and yet I think there's still places in this goal that will provide success for students as we ramp up to, hopefully one day we'll have 100% third grade reading and 100% fifth grade math proficiency. So I think there's that balance of how do we create space for students that maybe, you know, we're not starting with just kindergartners, we have a whole school system. And so how do we help those students succeed and meet these goals? And this gives me hope.
I mean, I completely agree, which is why our conversation about equity for the middle grades is really important, because we want students to not be just like grinding it out in classes where maybe they're not being successful, but also having the areas where they could be successful. And with our current models of some of our under-enrolled K-8s, we don't, they don't have that opportunity. I mean, for me, I was one of the first classes of girls who got to take shop, and that was, like, I don't know, why do we have to bring that back? But that was, wait, all sorts of things. I still have them. But that was really a place for a lot of kids who maybe didn't, you know, weren't successful somewhere else, but they shine with just the creativity and building things. Having said that, and I would say, it's just going to be more frustrating and I think potentially lead to students dropping out if they don't eventually have success in some of the most basic academic skills. So I would want to build it as an "and" conversation, because, you know, just grinding it out with no joy and things that you want to do, I don't think is going to benefit our kids. But we also, if your student's not mastering or proficient in sort of the most basic skills, you know, it doesn't work either. Yeah.
Director Moore?
So grinding it out. I like the eighth grade goal. I think it's going to take some work, but I like the idea that it, I mean, it does talk about the whole child. What concerns me is that it's pretty late in the eighth grade to be talking about the whole child. So what are we talking about in third grade and fifth grade? And I get very nervous when we start talking about focusing on literacy in preschool and kindergarten. And, you know, I'm gonna, I don't think you guys are evil, so I'm going to assume.
That's a good start.
That's good, yeah, yeah. Well, you know, it's.
Boy, that's going out on a limb there.
I mean, for, you don't know me, that's, so that's a bit of a stretch. So, I mean, I have to assume that, you know, you say these words and they mean things to you. And I think what I'm saying is, I'm guessing the words you're saying mean different things to you than they do to me. So I need, I need some reassurance that we're going to be talking about the whole child when we're talking about literacy too. Because my nightmare is four-year-olds sitting in early learning classes with flashcards so that they, you know, by the end, by the time they enter kindergarten, by God, they will know that alphabet. And because it happens.
Superintendent, taking away recess is not going to be your legacy, is it?
Right. So, I mean, I'm just, you know, I'm not accusing you of any of this, but I need some reassurance. I suspect I'm not alone here. And, yeah, so there.
I can understand that particularly during the NCLB era wasn't handled where well in this environment, and so I can understand the concern there, because there's some other ill-informed community members expressing similar ideas, but I'm not that kind of an educator. As a trained literacy specialist, I can't imagine creating a school experience that's oppressive to our youngest students. There has to be a joy of learning and teaching, and that's only going to happen when for our youngest students, they're in caring environments. And so you have to absolutely think of the whole child. I have this conversation all the time with my wife, a 25-year veteran teaching kindergarten about. all the time with my wife, a 25-year veteran teaching kindergarten about, you know, how you actually instill a forming sense of identity. It's almost the same conversation in the middle grades. What I appreciate about the middle grades is that it aligns with the audacious work we want to do in the redesign. And so it's a good question to wrestle with about how we give students multiple on-ramps to express that they've reflected on their learning journey, which I think if we do well, and it includes components of youth development, they're going to be that much better, that much stronger, that much better humans entering high school and a gaining sense of purpose and a discovery of sort of what they're passionate about that will drive them towards some post-secondary goal. And I think as educators, that's, that's how we like to think about, you know, this kind of a more holistic, positive experience. And it's probably a good time to make a plug here for National School Board's Cube Conference. I encourage board members to join me and a couple senior leaders to visit middle school redesign work in Miami, which is a little further along than we are. And it makes a very heavy, it puts a very heavy emphasis on the youth development, the social emotional learning development, given, given that those can be awkward years. If students aren't in school environments that really help students navigate that developing skill set. So, so, so yes, we're, I don't think anybody on my team's a reductionist or a didactic educator. We feel passionate about this work and believe that we try to be motivated by a student-centeredness to our work. No one has ever talked about test prep or drill and scale or all those other assumptions that some folks are making. Not sure where that's coming from. That's not the experience that we bring to the task at hand.
I wasn't suggesting that you do, but it's been known to happen. So I think, I think at the very least, as we're talking about these things, we need to be careful about how we're framing it. So the other thing is, I detect, so I think you're being polite about goals one and two. It's your first outing, so, and so, thank you. But I, tell me if I'm wrong, I seen, I think I detected some pretty serious reservations on your part about goals one and two.
About the achievable part?
Yeah. So-
I telegraphed that that much.
You know?
It was that twitch that started developing.
Yeah. And I can't let this go by, Director Moore. I think you may recall that my first career was as a children's therapist. So I'm always thinking about the whole child and social emotional development of children. And I don't think social emotional learning suddenly pops up in middle school. It just happens to be a place where we really need to attend to it. Those skills track all the way back. Yes, I have some reservations about that. I really want to spend some time looking at different ways we could model the data to really emphasize growth because every student should have some sense of growth. And we should be able to communicate whether or not students are making at least a year's worth of growth at a time. So that if I'm behind, I know that this year I did what I was supposed to do. And if we're talking about closing gaps, we can articulate how much we close that gap over time. That may take a little bit more work to get at, but I think that's probably closer to the spirit of what I think was embedded in what the board was looking at over time. And it really does set the stage then, again, for trying to communicate success to all students. All students should have some sense and some joy in school and some sense that they've had success, even if they're not meeting an incredibly high bar set by a career in college rate and a standard, which will take some time for many students to get to. So.
That's also part of changing culture for the adults.
Yep.
So are you, are you planning to bring forth a couple of proposals?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. I don't, Director Bailey?
So, yeah, so I look forward to some metrics that capture the every child as opposed to the just jumping, jumping over the bar. Before we close off, I think it's important for us as a board to reflect on the process that we've been in. And I've talked to a couple of board members about this, but what I say is, all in as my comments, one is when we started this process, we didn't map out, here's how we get from here to there. So we, we didn't say, we're going to go through a goal-setting process, it's going to have these steps, we're going to get to the end where we've adopted some goals. We didn't own that process. Staff came to us. So we did the World Cafe thing, which was a great exercise, but we jumped right from there into these seem to be our goals more or less. And we never had a step where we said, okay, that was a great exercise. Let's do a brainstorm or some kind of, let's get everything out there, see where there's strong consensus, see where ones, so we explicitly, because a number of us had different ideas that we threw up there that were never dealt with explicitly. And I'm happy to let go, you know, I had one on art. We kind of, hey, what happened to that? And everybody said, yeah, well, that's not our favorite. Okay, I'm good with that. But there were others that were put out there that we never said, you know what, that's not going to make the cut. It's important, we expect the superintendent to attend to it, but in terms of the major ones that we're going to focus on, that's not going to make the cut. And so we've ended up with a place now and where a staff person, for better for worse, has said, you don't really, you don't want, don't you want to have a kind of a high school completion one on there?
That came out of our conversation.
Yeah, partly, but it was a conversation and not a, you know, we didn't have a decision in that sense. There's, there was an ELL goal that was kind of out there for a while. The leadership goal kind of morphed into the middle grade and is kind of sneaking back into high school. Your goal explicitly for African-American, third-grade reading benchmark is an explicit goal. And there, others of you may have tossed out things as well that we didn't explicitly, we might have, this is not to criticize wherever we're going to end up, but as a process, I think we can do better. And better upfront as a board, mapping out a process, feeling like it's inclusive, feeling like, okay, I had my say, it made the cut or didn't make the cut, good with that. That's my two cents worth. If we're going to be a learning organization, I think we need to, to learn how to do it. I think it was, I think we can do a better process. I'm not saying it was a terrible process, but I think we can do better.
We're not done yet. And I would say that tonight is another opportunity for further discussion and evolution. And, you know, for sure, people, either the comments tonight or as follow-up, should be shared with the rest of the group. So like, hey, I think three of these four, you know, hit the mark. And, you know, this one still needs work. But hopefully, this process is, this iterative process is going to get us to a place. You know, I feel, oh, I hate to lose that ELL goal. But, but there's, but it's, it's okay. I mean, as we continue to evolve the different goals, I think at some point, we need to make a decision like, hey, is this good enough? And is, do we think this generally hits the mark and get going versus, you know, having, just going on and on because we need to get after the work. But I do think, I don't disagree with you that it was, it's been a meandering process and at points in time, not super efficient or effective at eliciting everybody's point of view, but I think we're getting there.
Well, I think to get there, we'd have to have an open brainstorm, put stuff up, do a red dot, green dot kind of exercise, or, you know, do some discussion, do a red dot, green dot. You know, I'm pretty sure the third grade and the fifth grade are sticking. I hear a lot of agreement in that middle grade. I don't, you know, there's probably a fair amount of agreement on all four of them, but are there others that might rise higher? Again, it's not that other stuff isn't important, it's what are we as a board going to focus on?
So maybe it would be useful, go ahead.
I wanted to also, I thank you for saying that, Director Bailey. I've been new in thinking that I was kind of unaware of the process. I feel like I haven't been really clear on the process either. I would also like to see some more discussion about the goals. The one that I was very passionate about is not reflected here. And that's important to me as a new board member, but also as the only black member on the school board, that, that we're not more explicit about calling out, you know, rather than saying lagging students, that we actually call out who those lagging students are. Because if we don't call them out, we're never going to get to them. I have another, just a comment about being a learning organization, and I think we are, we're doing excellent work here. I'm really proud to be here. But I'm wondering what we're going to do with the information that we heard, the testimony today from, I think it was Ms. Mackam, and what we read in the newspaper this weekend about the failure of the district to educate black kids. And so, you know, we're a learning organization, we have an opportunity now with this goal-setting to come out, come out in front to address these issues. They're not, they're not new. And I would like to have a little bit more deeper dive with staff and my colleagues here to, you know, to improve what we have in front of us.
I have a little bit of a different take, and that's that I think staff did an excellent job of leaving us through this. I did feel after the World Cafe that it would have been, it kind of jumped for me from that World Cafe exercise to, okay, these are now the goals we're working on. I would have liked an extra step there to have a conversation and brainstorm. I think that's the point in the process when it would have been most helpful. I feel like at this point, we've put a lot of work into these goals, staff has put a lot of work into these goals, and I feel very comfortable with all four of these goals. I think there's some massaging and nuances. And I hear Michelle, Director DePass, what you were saying about how we're not specifically calling out the failures of the district in the past to educate black students. And how do we name that in these goals and be really intentional about that as part of what we're seeking to correct? And so for me, it's how do we add that in, in a way that's helpful. But for my sense, I like all four goals. I'm ready to vote yes on the four goals as we move forward and feel like what I need, even if we don't end up with a leadership word in the high school one, that I, that I'm happy with, like the place we've eventually gotten.
Okay. I, yeah. And I hope I didn't imply that staff, you know, didn't do a great job on this. Because I think this is, I know this is better than what we had at this time last year. And again, I'm proud of, I'm proud of the product. I feel like personally, I could have used an extra step in between our work and being presented a product. And because I work in the area of community engagement, I'm always, one of the things I fail on sometimes in my own work professionally is failing to let people know how the information that they've shared with us in the evening, on their, in their free time, how that information will be used to inform our, our work. And so I think I like the idea of having another step where we're actually doing an exercise and seeing how we're, where we're landing as a body. And I think it would be helpful. And yes, it would take more time. And yes, it would take more staff time, which I realize is a lot to ask.
Can I just reflect out loud where we were eight to 10 weeks ago?
Yeah.
You didn't have access to a whole lot of data. You got delivered to you in a box. We started to digest those, understand how to read some of these reports. Frankly, a year ago, we didn't have most of these metrics. We've started institutionalizing some assessments that might actually inform instruction and grade level team and department conversations among teachers. We learned what makes a SMART goal. We spent some time looking at examples of that so that when we get to a point to attaching hard numbers here, that, that we have a sense of what, what makes it rigorous. And then we do have Department of Education accountability measures. Like no matter what we have here, we still have to, we're still accountable to those. Our schools have similarly accountability measures and school improvement plans. They're, you know, they're a little bit further along in their data literacy because they have to do this every fall. And they have the exact same conversations, and they have to get really tight about defining what's their gap area, what's the growth target, how are we going to leverage the little bit of discretionary resource and people that we have available to meet those gaps. And we're trying to build overall capacity for, for getting there and differentiating supports and interventions to our most underserved communities. And we have a lot of work remaining to do, or we haven't had the resources, frankly, to deploy the reading specialists and everything else that we need to do. And so part of this process is to hear out not what all those other didactic measures are, but what the board values and to set an aspirational target for how our work will stream towards that. And so as we begin to kind of think about how a strategic plan with a multi-year business plan attached to it will include some things that any strong school system should have, but we want to orient it to the things that the board has said, this is the flag we want to put down for the next few years. How do we scaffold our work towards it? And how will we progress monitor towards that work? So, so if you hear a sort of listening more than sort of chiming in is because we're, we could see that the board is wrestling with, how does, how is it inclusive enough of the things that the seven of us find important because they address some segment of the work that we need to do, or students who, through a racial equity lens, haven't yet had that opportunity historically in Portland public schools. And so, you know, you heard Dr. Brown talk about, we want to strive towards raising excellence in that part, but we also want to close the gaps. And so how do you accelerate that? And how, how are those things achievable? And if we want to get aggressive about it, then that's going to mean some hard decisions about what we prioritize. And so how are we going to balance all of that is sort of what we'll make for, for good future conversations. And so Dr. Brown's going to be a regular installment here at the board, you know, as we progress monitor and continue to do this in really strategic ways over time. But, you know, I think we've heard enough conversation tonight where we'll take another spin at it and bring it back to you again. And I don't think the board should rush this. I think we want all seven of you to feel confident about these reflecting our values and the communities, about what we want to measure, that every student is growing up in the system achieving.
I appreciate that very much, Superintendent. And I, we've tried really hard to be inclusive in this process and to make sure that everybody has felt along the way that we're getting everything out on the table and listening to one another. So just, I want to take Director Lowry's lead and see if we can just go down the line on where people are with the four goals as expressed here so that we can then maybe reevaluate our next steps. But you might not have been in here when Ailey spoke, so Julia, why don't you go next?
Okay. So conceptually, I think the- Thank you. Conceptually, I think these are the, the right conceptual goals. You know, there's a lot of definition, I think, especially in the post-secondary readiness that needs to be added. So we have better definition of exactly what that is. I'm with Michelle, I'm sorry, Director DePass, that I think we need to be really explicit because this sounds way too generic. I think we should say who it is that we're really focused on. We're going to help all students, but who, what students do we need to focus on the most? And I think that just needs to be called out. But generally, I think it's the right direction and they're, they're in the ballpark.
Yeah, I pretty much agree with Director Lowry's comments. I'm comfortable with the goals. I appreciate, I appreciate the comments about the process. I actually, I do think it meandered a little bit, but I also, I'll just speak for myself, my own, I felt like I had an opportunity at various times to talk about whether I, I wanted to see something different or not. I am, I am comfortable with these goals. You know, one thing, I've said it before and I'll keep bringing it up, and I'm really glad you're on board, Dr. Brown. You know, one thing, I've said it before, and I'll keep bringing it up, and I'm really glad you're on board, Dr. Brown.
Thank you.
These are board goals. They're not goals for the entire district. They're not everything we're going to measure. They're not everything we're going to look at. And, and I just think sometimes we get caught up in that of like, oh, but, but how are we going to know before they get to third grade? Or before they get to fifth grade, or high school, or whatever? And even getting back to your comment about you want all schools to see themselves in this. Maybe, but, but maybe if the board focuses, we're actually going to achieve a little bit more, because the schools will see themselves in all the other measures that we will have when we have a robust performance management system for the district, where all these things, the arts goals, the, you know, entire holistic, you know, whole student goals, will all be there. And you'll have access to all of that data. You can see the, the vision I'm laying out for you here a few years from now. You'll have access to that data anytime. All we're doing as a board is picking three of those and saying, here's where we're going to focus effort and resources this year, next year, the year after. But three years from now, we might change. Three years from now, we might adopt an arts goal and drop one of the others in order to focus, you know, on that. So, and, and that's, these performance management systems are, they, they change over time, and they should. They, they are living organisms, so.
If we are going to vote on it tonight, I wouldn't be fully comfortable. So I'm hoping that we have more discussion. Sometimes I think, you know, if I was the queen of the world, I would say, yes, let's get an art school, and let's make sure everybody graduates knowing how to build something. If nothing else, a cheese board, you know, or something useful for when we have this earthquake. You know, to, to be able to. Exactly. But so, yeah, just, just tonight, I, I appreciate the discussion here tonight, and I, I wouldn't be comfortable voting on it tonight. But appreciate your responses as well. Thanks.
Excuse me. Can you just, I, because I don't think we're going to vote on it tonight, but if we, what, what do you need to, to be supportive? Would you need to, as you mentioned before, call out specific subgroups? Or are there specific things that when we come to the table the next time, like, I need to see that in order to be supportive?
Yeah, and I, I don't know that I've, I mean, definitely being more specific in our language, I think would be helpful for all of us. I mean, all of us up here, that the, the people that were elected recently all ran on an equity platform. We, we all agreed it was important. And one of the things I know from doing work in my day job is that you need to, you need to be very specific in your language. You need to be specific in the populations you're going to serve. So, yeah, I'd also feel, would like to, again, have some type of, a little bit more process. It doesn't have to be a lot, but it would be really interesting for me to actually sit down in a work session again with colleagues and staff. And have a dot exercise, for lack of a better term.
Director Bailey?
Yeah. Agree with Director DePass. To me, again, I'm, I like all the goals. That's, that's not the issue. It's more the process, how we got there. And to me, in terms of priority, the, the reading goal is just there. And Superintendent Guerrero, you've talked a couple of times about sort of a kitchen sink. If we threw everything at this, could we even get there more ambitiously? Because we really, you know, we're getting an injection of funds next year. We're going to see how, sadly, how that's not going to be enough. That we have so much shoring up to do with fundamental systems, like our IT system, as we've talked, you know, talked about. That's outside of the classroom. That needs to be attended to, that's been deferred for so long. But if we, if we said the reading goal was number one, because that's so foundational, and we did a kitchen sink, you know, again, not throwing everything there, but everything that made sense to throw there, what would that look like? I'd be interested in being part of that, that conversation, which might mean as a board, we go with three goals, not four. So I don't, and what's, Director Scott said, I don't think that we need to see every school is reflected in these goals. Because we're doing, I think we need to focus on the foundational work that will certainly affect every school going forward as that cohort advances.
Director Latrell?
I don't know if I have much to add. Just because a lot of the stuff that I'm going to be doing is, I mean, it's important to still keep all this in mind, but a lot of my work this year is going to be with the students, so thinking more, you know, I mean, I want to go through at least on my own and look more at like the middle school, or like with someone else, look at the middle school and the high school, because the middle schoolers are going to become high schoolers. And then, you know, it's all just going to, it's a circle. But also, I was wondering if I could go home, because I have to be at school at 7:45 tomorrow to help with freshman orientation, so.
I want to wrap up this discussion, and then we have a lot of staff, and have an awesome day tomorrow.
Thank you.
Happy first day of school.
It's going to be long, but good.
We'll look forward to hearing about it. All right, Director Moore?
So I guess, I guess in a nutshell, I, I think they're in the ballpark. I'm eager to hear some amended amendments to Goals One and Two. Yeah, I mean, I, I think we're, I, I think we're closing in. I don't think we're there yet, but I'm thinking a month. By, by the end of September, we should have this nailed, I think. With a couple of, couple of more iterations in between.
All right. My only comment echoing a few others is, I think on the first goal, first two goals, if we were to flip how we state our focus, instead of the emphasis on the aggregate growth, but really put the emphasis on who are our students that we're really doubling, doubling down on our strategies for, because we want to see accelerated growth. I think if we express it that way, it makes a difference. So thank you so much. It's great to have you here as part of this process.
Thank you.
All right. We do have a lot of staff members and a few parents up here who have an early morning tomorrow. But we wanted to move into the next topic around our own board governance and how we want to organize ourselves to conduct our board work. And we've been doing a fair amount of governance work together over the last couple of months, especially given the opportunity to have a newly constituted board. So we, everyone has had a chance to look at the proposed board committees, which are not very different from the structure that we have now. And then also, we want to talk just very briefly about some other relationships that we have with standing committees and, and community committees. So I wanted to start it off with the board committees. What we're looking at were, is having an Audit Committee, which is required for us, as well as Charter and Alternative Programs Committee. Bringing, reprising our School Improvement Bond Committee. Continuing our Policy Committee, which is now called Policy and Governance. But I think we're in agreement that governance is a collective responsibility, so that'll just be around our board policies. And we'll be working with OSBA on revising many of our board policies. And that work has just gotten underway. And, you know, we want to talk just a little bit about the expected cadence of the meetings for these committees, because in my time on the board, we functioned as basically a committee of the whole without board committees, and then swung the pendulum far to the other side with a really intensive meeting schedule of board committees. I think we want to strike the right balance here of having board committees meet once a month. The Charter Committee is different, because it will include a focus on alternative programs and policy questions that pertain to those. But Charter Committee doesn't have the need to meet as regularly up until the time when renewals come forward. So generally speaking, a monthly cadence. And I think at the last Audit Committee meeting, Chair, Director Brim Edwards talked with that committee about moving toward a quarterly meeting schedule. And that committee also has community members on it. So I just wanted to open it up for discussion on these committees. And if anybody feels like anything is missing, this is by our board statutes. This is a collective responsibility of the board to decide how we're going to organize ourselves and what board committees we're going to have, so. Any thoughts?
I need some help. CGCS?
So let's just focus on our board committees for.
Can you just tell me what they mean? The CGCS.
The Appointments?
Council of Great City Schools.
Okay, and then.
Let me go, so let me go through, so I was just talking about our board committees, but we also have on here Appointments. So this would be appointing a board liaison to each of these standing committees. So the first one is Representative to the Council of Great City Schools. The second is the Liaison to Head Start. Then Community Budget Review Committee, Bond Advisory Committee. Then we have these Design Advisory Groups for each of our schools and modernizations. So we have Benson. We have multiple pathways to graduation, now that we're looking at the MPG building for, for the Benson campus. So we'll need to appoint liaisons to those. And then we have Master Planning Processes getting underway for Cleveland, Jefferson, and Wilson. So we'll, at some point, see the, the initiation of those Design Advisory Groups. So those are, the reason that we have board liaisons is because there is, in each of those charters, or some of them don't actually have charters, but in their descriptions of their work, they, they play, they have an advisory role to the board. So if they have an advisory role to the board, then we need a mechanism for how the board is getting advised. And then, we also have standing committees. We have SPAC, which is the Special Education Advisory Committee, Talented and Gifted Advisory Committee, and the English Language Learners Council. So these haven't had active representation from the board in the recent past, but again, they are supposed to play an advisory role to the board, so, so we should have that.
There's also DPAC, which is the Advisory Board for Title I.
Yeah. But I'm not, yes, it has not been actively.
Can I, can I just clarify a distinction that has existed in the past among these different committees? So CBRC, the Community Budget Review Committee, has, as far as I know, always been a board committee. So membership is appointed by the board. The other committees have been in the past Superintendent Committees. So I don't believe they have routinely had a board liaison attached to them. And DPAC is one, we used to have DPIC as well. And I don't even remember District Parent.
Involvement.
Involvement Committee. So the, these other committees are kind of sitting out there. And I, I think some of them have been more active than others. And they're, as far as I can tell, over the last, I don't know, five, six years, they've been mostly self-organizing.
I guess the question I would ask is, do we see utility in having board liaisons to, A, support them, and B, inform us on their activity?
So I, I think so. Over the last two years, I've gone to a couple of the, the meetings, and I always learn a lot and believe that it's an opportunity for us to show up and listen, because it's really in some ways their form. And also, I think we do our work better if we're informed by what they're thinking. I do believe we should get clear on what their charter is, because I think that, that's not clear. And so the expectation of who, who are they advising and what's their role? It just, every, if we set expectations, I think things will work out better. But I, I think they're great resources for us, and we should better utilize them.
I think that's a perfect segue to Jonathan Garcia, who's just come up, who has been taking an inventory and.
Yeah, so just wanted to note that three weeks ago, or, you know, about three weeks ago, we hired our new Director of Community Engagement, Shanice Clark. Part of our responsibility is to actually really revive some of these advisory councils, to really be, you know, advise, advising boards, or advising councils to the board. Making sure that we have accurate bylaws that reflect the, the purpose, the chart, you know, creating a charter for every single one of these that currently exists. And then really looking at areas or committees that we could explore, that, that we can bring new community members into the fold, right? Because we know that our process really, our, our work here is, community involvement is, is necessary. So, so again, Shanice, three weeks ago, started, and she has an inventory of what's currently happening with those advisory councils, which ones are active, which ones are not. There's also the Migrant Ed Council, for example, that's not reflected there, and a number of others. So I would encourage the board, you know, a little bit of patience. I think one of, one of my, in conversations with the superintendent, I think one of my visions for the next year is to ensure that these advisory councils come on a regular basis to this board, to this, to this body, to share, you know, at the beginning of the year, some of the, the goals or, you know, some of their goals. And then really in the spring to say, you know, these are the things that we have seen accomplished. And this is, you know, so again, bringing some more meaning to those advisory councils that have not, that hasn't existed for, for a long time. And making sure that, you know, that there are staff liaisons that really can support their efforts. So, you know, happy to work with all of you on, or some of you, or all of you, to, to really re-energize those committees. You also, just as a, as a point of reference, you did also approve a $5,000 investment in really reviving some of these councils, so ensuring that there's, you know, food, that there's childcare, that there is all of those things. So you did approve that in the budget last year.
We'll look forward to hearing an update on that work.
So I did call up OSBA months ago to say, which of these are mandated? And they were unable to give me, which I thought was interesting. Because I, I know DPIC at one time was mandated, I think through No Child Left Behind. But I have no idea if that's still on the books or not. DPIC being a general parent involvement.
Charter is.
But it's certainly, we have policy that created DPIC.
Okay, well, we'll look, look forward to that coming back from Jonathan's department. Any other thoughts here?
Can I get some clarification on the Budget Committee? Is that going to be a separate committee, or?
Yes, so just, we wanted to just add it, since the budget functions as a committee of the whole, but can be separately.
So you've talked about charter and alternative programs. Tell me about alternative programs. I have.
I think the thinking here is.
Which specifically are you talking about, including under the purview? And what would the committee do?
So with each of these board committees, I think we want to try to be disciplined about really focusing on agendas that look at policy that will be coming to the board within the, the near future. We, that hasn't always been the case. And so we've had some issues that have come up with our community-based alternative programs, our internal district alternative programs, that really haven't had a venue for discussion. I mean, even the, the facilities issues around multiple pathways could have benefited from broader discussion around, you know, what is it, how do we see these programs? So there's funding issues that have been really, our community-based alternative programs have really been looking for a venue for conversation around funding formulas and such. So there are some policies related to our alternative programs that just haven't really found a venue. So that will be part of the charge. We're thinking that it makes sense to have a board committee that. We're thinking that it makes sense to have a board committee that looks at those.
Seems a little fuzzy to me right now. I'm not saying I'm opposed or for, but, and specifically what the charge is. So I'm, I don't know if you're looking for decisions tonight. I saw discussion, but not decision in terms of board committees.
Just discussion. We don't need, it's not something that we vote on. It's just a board discussion around, do we have general agreement around how we plan to organize ourselves?
We haven't voted on committees in the past.
No, it's not. It's...
Would we not just, I mean, we have a list of them here, sign up or express interest in, or could we?
Yes, once we decide what the committees are.
Oh, what they are.
Yep.
So Director Bailey, one of the things that Chair Konstantin and I had discussed is taking essentially the body of work that we need to accomplish this year, whether it's reviewing the charters, adopting the budget, approving a bond package, and sort of charting it out across the year, and then taking the committees and making sure they're clearly charted about what's in scope and what's out. And the things that aren't in the committee's scope will be full-board work. For example, creating the superintendent's evaluation template. The budget work, all things that would be at that level, and then being really specific about what the discrete work is, and do that through describing the committee's jurisdiction, and then getting agreement on what sort of the calendar is for the year, so that not only board members in the community, if they want to engage in the work, understand what that, what will be, the scope throughout the year, but that also staff are able to plan. I mean, obviously, there's going to be things, there'll be things that come up, but most things, we can, we plan. You know, every spring, we have a certain number of charters that we've got to review. We have a budget that we've got to adopt. We know that we're going to be putting in their bond package. So really building that out, so that there's predictability for staff, but also for the community wanting to engage, they can see how that's going to happen.
Well, in that case, I think this is the cart before the horse. Horse before, yeah. Which way is the horse facing? Yeah, right. It would seem like we would need to agree on a work plan, and then the committees would fall out of that.
I think there's reasonable expectation that the work that we have before us falls within these committees. And then one thing we didn't discuss is, you know, we have the ability to create task forces for more topical matters. These are not standing committees. And I think since we're not planning to have the Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee that we have had more recently, the first task force that we would likely convene would be an intergovernmental task force, because we know we have.
So I don't know how you're jumping to that conclusion, because we have not discussed that.
Right. Having a task force.
Right. And so I would argue that we have a great many issues that would fall under an intergovernmental affairs entity. And I think most of them are of longstanding. So most of them have existed for quite a while, and I expect that they will continue into the future. So I don't think, I mean, a task force suggests that it's a kind of short-term, you know, very discrete number of specific issues that you deal with, and then, you know, call it good, you're done. And I don't think intergovernmental affairs would fall under that. I mean, I think we're not looking at a long legislative session, so, you know, we might, we might need to have some sort of mechanism to respond to something that might come up during the short session. But I would pretty strongly argue for intergovernmental affairs to be a committee, not a task force.
Okay. That's good feedback.
So another, just offer a slightly different opinion. I think generally, when we're talking about things that fall within, whether it's the legislative agenda, or something that's related to a relationship, whether it's the city, the county, that a lot of those things happen at the full board level because of the interest of the full board. And so the thinking, I'm just, my point of view is just that that's something that you then get, everybody wants to be on the committee, because everybody has an interest in those issues. At least, that's what the practice has.
Okay, except the practice has been that we don't do intergovernmental affairs. We don't.
Fair enough.
You know, how many, how many times have we had presentations from the OSM folks? And we hear about issues around permitting with the city, and, you know, zoning issues. I mean, all of...
Parks.
Parks. I mean, there's all kinds of things that are out there that the board is not dealing with in any way. And I think some of these things are significant enough and persistent enough that I think it would be helpful if the board did have some capacity to elevate some issues, to get some resolution. And I don't, you know, and if we just wait for it to come to the full board, it ain't going to happen.
I think there's definitely a recognition that we have a lot of matters in that arena that have not been attended to, and there's a real appetite for focusing on it.
Can I ask a philosophical question? Maybe I missed it. What's the difference between a committee and a task force?
Just that a committee is a standing committee. We're having this conversation because it can be reconstituted, as our board has been reconstituted, with the, but with the expectation that it meets regularly, that it has a charter that doesn't change. Task forces, I can send you a link, it's in our bylaws, a description, can be created at any time, can have a limited duration.
Limited scope versus ongoing work.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's a little more ad hoc.
Yeah, exactly.
And I'm sorry if I missed this part as well, but committees can be, committees can be added during the year, or?
They could.
Or no?
They could.
So, but all of this is, again, I just keep coming back to, everything we're doing is sort of fluid and flexible.
Right. Just like the goals. You can add a new goal, add a new committee.
Well, I think one, I will say, yes, and, I think because it takes a fair amount of staff time to support committee work, that we have to be cognizant that when we set up a committee, that it's starting kind of a machine. And so, you know, be thoughtful of whether that, is that the best use of staff time? Is this something that would benefit from having some really concentrated, deep discussions, which you generally have more at the committee level than the full board level? And if that's the right place to have it, then it's worthwhile. So I think the, sort of, the sideboard should be, as you well know.
Yep, excellent point.
And it creates, but it creates the basic structure for our work.
Thanks.
All right. If anybody has any lingering thoughts, please send them forward. I'm going to...
Okay, I was just going to speak to something that hasn't come up, that hasn't been addressed. But I just wanted to talk about the enrollment balancing and reconfiguration. So this goes to some of the equity-related work that we have talked about over the last year, and that the forecasting work is happening. But I strongly believe that this work should happen in a smaller group, at least initially, to make a series of recommendations, versus having it be at the full board level, because this can just, could potentially kill us. And I think this is an example of...
I think it has in the past.
Well, I think, no, I would say, when we opened the two middle schools, the committee of Director Bailey, Moore, and Anthony really did a lot of very detailed work that had to be done. And then when it got brought to the rest of the board, I think there was a trust in the process that happened. But I, you know, always finish those votes thinking, thank God, there was that committee that did that work, because, you know, you're going, you know, some cases, street by street, or, you know, looking at, you know, spending a lot of time looking at really detailed data that I think is absolutely necessary, because we're going to need that on the board. I just think it's better to have it come from a group that has a really concentrated focus on it, versus, hey, we only have 20 minutes at the board meeting to discuss this. But the corollary is, then we all have, it'll be important to trust the committee and the recommendations, because not everybody's going to then have that same deep level of understanding. But I just anticipate this next year, that's going to be something we're really going to need. Were you raising your hand to volunteer for that again, Director Bailey?
Well, if so, yes. But I think, in this, taking a step back and talking about governance, we've had AJ come out and say, "Don't do that," but we haven't heard, "Do this." And there's a number of issues that, I mean, this is kind of an input issue, and there's others out there that fall into, for me, it's still something I want to talk through and figure out what our role is. Clearly, in this process, there were things that would come to us for decisions. But I want AJ to come back and continue that discussion very soon, so that we get more clarity on our role, because I don't have that clarity.
All right.
As superintendent, I'd like a little clarity around whatever committees that you, the board decides to land on, which of those will require some staffing? Because then that also shifts time and effort of the staff, and what we can or can't accomplish with a very limited cabinet level of people around all the things that we're describing we want to do. So just keep that in mind.
And that's a really important consideration, because we've seen the flip side of that as well.
Yeah, I think all of us have acknowledged that in the past, our committees were extremely inefficient.
Yeah.
And as we structure these committees, whatever we end up with, I think it's going to be really important to increase both our communication with the public upfront in terms of engagement, and with our fellow board members. So it's more than trust, it's also some documentation along the way. And I really don't want to get into the staff doing a big dog and pony presentation in the committee, then having to come to the board and do exactly the same thing. That's a huge, huge waste.
So just a process question. So where do we go from here? And I think when we do whatever we settle on, I think each of these entities should have a charter.
Absolutely. Yep. And most of them don't now.
Well, none of them do, actually.
Yeah. Which leads us to our next item, which is moving on to the business agenda.
Well, just one nagging thing. I would feel most comfortable with actually voting on these committees. I mean, you said, I think Director Brim Edwards, you said, "Well, we sort of have a sense of it. If we're going to make a decision, let's just vote, let's just get it on the record, clear, and move forward," and not slide into a decision.
Do you want to vote on these proposed committees tonight? Do you want to bring a resolution forward now? Because we do need to get, you know, assemble, well, we need to get people home, but we also need to start our work in our committee structures.
So, I mean, I would be ready to vote on audits, bonds, and policy right now going The charter, I would want to, if we're going to attach alternative programs, I'd want to hear more about that before coming to any decision.
Okay, let's do this. We have round of conversations scheduled in the next week about where people's individual interests lie as far as serving on committees. So let's have those talks, and then we'll come back and we'll wrap things up. That'll help, that'll help inform that conversation around exactly where we want to land with our committees.
And Chair Konstantin will clarify what advisory councils the board actually wants to commission, because I, as superintendent, haven't commissioned any.
Right. Or which ones are standing and, you know, could benefit from a board liaison.
I think some of them are by statute.
Yep.
I'm pretty sure DPAC, the Title I, is by statute. I believe ELL is also by statute.
I think we're digging into, we're digging into all of that. Okay, so before we come back, we'll circulate another proposal around committees, have conversations around people's individual interests, so we can get the work going. I'm going to leave it to Director Brim Edwards to take us into the business agenda, where we have two items that still need discussion.
Should I just start with the two items, Director Konstantin? So I'm going to just start with the easiest item, that will be the Charter Review Committee. So before I start, I'm just going to say, we're going, it's, there's a revised copy. I'm sorry. The charter for the Audit Committee and the Independent Auditor. So there's a revised version, and I thought what I would do is walk, this was on the business agenda. I think we had some adjustments over the last couple days. We'll discuss them, answer anybody's questions, and schedule it for the next board meeting. But we do want to get this approved. We're about ready to add a second auditor, and it's good to set the rules of the road. So I'm just going to, maybe our Internal Performance Auditor, if you want to come down in case there's questions. But I'm going to first just walk people through the changes since it was sent out last week. So to start with, our Internal Performance Auditor, Mary Catherine Moore, built this, and it was built basically using the foundation, the Yellow Book, or the GAGAS standards, which are common auditing standards, also the Institute of Auditing, I, the Institute of Internal Auditors Guidance, and our own board policy. So there's many things in here that come straight from our own board policy or from GAGAS. And I think it's important to realize that many of the things that are standards, we didn't just take out of the standards and put in the charter, because it'd be a 230-page document. So this is sort of a high-level summary. This came to the Audit Committee, is brought by the Internal Performance Auditor, it came to the committee twice. We had discussions about it. We also had the benefit of some very experienced external government auditors look at this and provide feedback, so we had the benefit of that. Since it was posted last week, there are a couple things that I'll walk through that were changes. So on page two, there's a section titled Independence and Objectivity. And on number four, in a conversation with the superintendent, we decided that we would add some, specifically who the others might be, who might unduly influence the auditor, and that would be both management and board members. So just to be clear, that we want to make clear that neither management nor board members should be unduly influencing the auditors. In addition, Director Moore felt that there was a need to be just even more clear, although GAGAS and all the professional standards speak to the independence and the avoidance of conflicts of interest. And then those are standards that auditors adhere to, that we would add. And number five, that's here in that same section, which is the auditor will conduct an audit by not being affected by influences that compromise professional judgment, thereby allowing auditor to act with integrity and exercise objectivity. allowing auditor to act with integrity and exercise objectivity and professional skepticism. I guess I should have been an auditor. So the next page, on page three, under the section Responsibility, the, on number one, there is a discussion about the development of the annual audit plan. The sentence ended at, "The Audit Committee will then make a recommendation of the Board of Education." And I believe this was Director Moore who added, "Which will provide final authorization." So just providing that clarity, even though that was what the intent was, but just to make it absolutely clear that the board provides the final authorization. Moving down, the document on number seven, there was a missing word. Thank you, Director Moore, the word was PPS. And under Management Responsibility, there's just some cleanup wording. Under the section Report of Irregularities, in a discussion with superintendent, currently, if the superintendent is believed to be a party to abuse or illegal acts, the auditor will, shall report the acts directly to the Audit Committee Chair, which is what our policy calls for. But in the discussion with our superintendent, we've added, "Who will share with all members of the Board of Education?" So while we-
That was my insistence for the record.
So I say, we might want to go back in our policy and make that added clarification as well because, I say, that just came directly from our audit policy. Down in scope of performance audit activities, number three, Director Moore suggested adding, I think, which we thought was understood, but just being absolutely clear, that activities and programs that are being conducted and funds expended in compliance with applicable laws and authorized allocations, so also looking at the fund side of things. And then there is, this is under the scope of performance audit activities, number 11, the sentence started with, "Resources are acquired economically," and the superintendent suggested adding school district resources. I think it was under, we felt it was understood that resources were the public resources, but this is to distinguish, say, from a fund or a foundation. We're at number 11. You read this?
I don't know what acquired economically means.
Yeah, I have the same question. We're just cheaply.
Oh, acquired economically, like in an efficient way?
It's a weird fragile.
It's auditor lingo?
Yes. It's the IIA book. IIA book, okay. We'll stick with it.
For a good price.
It's more good pricey, fairly.
So then the next session, section, and this is more auditor language, Director Moore, but views of responsible efficiencies, officials is a term of art. And this next section, the superintendent also had a question, just to make crystal clear who is responsible for the creation of the corrective action plan and the implementation, and that is very clearly management. Managers manage and auditors audit. So while the auditor will create findings and make recommendations and could make recommendations for the corrective action plan, the responsibility for the development of the corrective action plan and the implementation is management. So we thank you for that.
Not that this would ever happen with our talented internal auditor. I don't also actually have to agree with the findings or write a corrective action plan.
Correct.
Just for the record.
Whoa, throws down the gauntlet.
And then in the same section, there was a good question that was asked about the last section here. And again, this is something that came straight from our audit policy, which we may want to clarify, but it's talking about contracted audits, and it says, "In the case of contracting audits, audits may be released without inclusion of a response." And what this didn't include is the language that you see up above is, sometimes there isn't a management response because management doesn't respond. And that doesn't mean that audit doesn't get released. So what we've done is just made clear that whether it's an internal audit or a contract audit, there's the opportunity for a management response, it's within a set time period. If within the established time period, the audit isn't, or the management doesn't respond, that the audit is released, but that is, that fact is noted in the audit report. So I think that's a clarification. And that is it. In terms of the, I mean, just finish my sentence, it just, that's it in terms of suggested language that was provided. There also were a number of questions that I think Director Moore had provided in advance, and so I don't know if you want to ask them now or-
I have one simple question. Under Quality Control of Peer Review, it says, "The auditing standards require an external review every three years." And by whom?
There are actually external reviewers that are in GAGA. They listed five of them. And the one that usually does the school districts is the Association of Local Government Auditors.
The auditor of the auditor.
Yeah, yes.
Right, so that's, like, basically ensure they're following standards and best practices.
Right, exactly.
And for what it's worth, I think it's worth noting here that because we have an extremely small auditing function, which will hopefully soon be two people, that that will be a very aggressive thing for them to be able to do because the standard, most audit shops are much bigger and to meet the standards, which are rigorous.
Okay. Okay, I had a bigger question. And that is, in the scope of activities in that section, it's, it's pretty expansive, and it's not clear to me what, what the focus of the activities will be, or if there are any limitations on the kinds of issues or activities or programs that would be considered within the scope of responsibility for the auditor as opposed to somebody else. So, and here's my essential question. What is, if we're going to be, if the plan is that we're going to be building capacity for evaluation, program evaluation and performance evaluation, what is the difference between the evaluation function that we're building and the auditing function that we're building?
So I'd like to reply first to that. So we are scheduling a work session around the work of the Audit Committee because this is, these are employees that report to the board, and the Audit Committee has gotten off and running, and we now have a scope. But we want to take a couple of steps back as a full board to really talk about, what does this function look like, which is Jermaine, your question, what is the purview, what is inside the purview, what is outside the purview? So Deputy Superintendent Hertz is going to come forward with some best practices around the audit function in school districts that I think are going to get to the heart of that question. And the answer to your question is really to be determined by all of us in terms of how we decide that we're going to structure that. And do you want to say anything more?
Well, it's just the, we have the system performance team that is evaluating student achievement and more closely tied to instruction and having that expertise, similarly to when the Secretary of State did our audit last December, last January, it came out, and when instructional leaders here tried to explain to the Secretary of State auditors the improvements that are being made instructionally, it wasn't necessarily something that they could, since they weren't educators, it was harder for them to understand how improvements were being made. There was, if you will, a translation factor. So the question is really what goes before internal audit team versus system performance team? And we now have both groups in the district. And looking at auditing with processes, procedures, operations, financial, certainly it's about performing well. For instance, contracting is one we're currently, on the current audit plan that we're working on, where it's looking at our instructional contracts with community-based organizations, working on instructional improvement for students. But it's really, the internal audit component is looking at the metrics that are in place and making sure our systems are in place for evaluating those contracts. So there can be an overlap, but really trying to come back and provide examples and offer information to guide discussion with the board.
So we're also, so I appreciate the interest of the entire board in the audit function, given that it's all of our responsibilities. And I know that in addition to the soon-to-be two internal performance auditors we have, we also have a community member who's on the Audit Committee, who has a lot of expertise, who has already shared information with Auditor Moore, that sounds weird, the other Moore, that is a high level, like, what's the function of internal performance auditing, how it differs? I mean, Kari Guy, who's the, with the city of Portland, and on our Audit Committee is very clear, auditors audit, managers manage, and it's very different. I think also to give you comfort, I hope, is that the auditors are going to be auditing or doing, undertaking reviews from a approved audit plan from the board. So there's not going to be auditing that occurs that's not within the scope of the audit, audit plan.
I mean, I appreciate that, and I know we're going to be, I know it's written in here that the board would approve the audit plan. But if we're going to go to the bother of having a charter, I think the purpose of a charter, and I think every committee ought to have one, the perfect, purpose of the charter is not only to say what the committee is supposed to do, it's also supposed to sort of delimit the scope, you know, kind of clarifying, at least implicitly, if not explicitly, what the committee is not supposed to do. And, I mean, I'm perfectly comfortable with the explanation that we just got about the distinction between an audit function being essentially operational, financial, you know, looking at systems and the functioning of the systems and controls and that sort of thing, as opposed to an evaluation of an academic intervention, for example.
So to your point, I mean, they are very clear, and we've just pulled out some of these, but if you go to the independence and objectivity, you know, the very first point, auditors should not provide non-audit services that involve performing management functions or make management decisions. And-
Which I don't really understand what that means.
Pardon?
Okay. I mean, is that the auditors audit and managers manage?
Right.
Okay, but that doesn't, that doesn't speak to what they're supposed to be auditing.
Well, there's a whole list of things that they're supposed to be auditing.
There's nothing in here that stipulates, I mean, just to put it most explicitly, there's nothing in here that indicates whether the auditor would be looking at, would be auditing an academic intervention and looking at the effectiveness of an academic, an instructional intervention.
In fact, number two pretty much says the opposite, or at least could be read that way.
Actually, can I just ask Director Moore for just a little more clarification on your concern there? Because I actually think a performance auditor would look at whether an academic intervention that the district put in place had been effective. It's different than saying, "Here's something you should do differently," right? That's not the auditor's job. But it would be totally, totally appropriate for a performance auditor in a school district to say, a district puts something into place, two, three years later, to come back and say, "Did you get the benefits from that that you, that you thought you would?" And that's what a performance auditor does.
And I would say a system performance would then also offer suggestions for improvement. So that's the difference, is not just only identifying what needs to be improved, but then going the next step with having the expertise to suggest additional ways to improve.
Right.
So in that case, I would argue it would be more efficient and effective to have the system performance evaluation address that question as opposed to-
Yeah, so one of the things, what a performance auditor is doing is actually, and it should be duplicative of what good management is doing. I mean, good management is constantly looking around and saying, "What are the problems? And what are the things? And what are the controls that we need to be putting in place?" The performance auditor is just more independent from that and has frankly just a little bit more time and space to sort of take a step back and occasionally point out things that staff, because they're really busy running the district, may not have, may not have noticed. Totally agree with you, it would be more effective, but I, those things are not mutually exclusive.
So that suggests to me is that we still are grappling with clarity around the role.
So do you want to suspend the, do you want to make a motion to delay vote?
We're not, we already said, I'm sorry, while you were going.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Already said that this is a discussion and-
Yeah.
Okay.
It's an important discussion, and I appreciate all the work that's gone into this. I want to make one other point, is that the title of this is Charter for the Committee and for the Auditor. And I think there's one or two committee things in here, but to me, not a, a charter for the committee is not reflected in here. And I think it would be helpful to have a separate charter for the committee as opposed to interweaving those two together.
Okay.
You can pull that out.
That's doable. I do, you need, you need to leave the references to the Audit Committee in here because they're the, the place where the auditor, the direct engagement for the auditor, but you very much could make it, this is more of a timeless charter versus, this is what we're going to do this next year.
But your point is well taken, that we'll have a template for all of the committees that will eventually have their charters and-
So for example, I think a charter would include what's public, public engagement around the work, again, in a general way, what's the expectation around engagement? And I don't see that reflected in here.
This is very standard for an audit, internal performance audit charter. We can, I don't know, Mary Catherine?
Again, I'm talking about the committee, not the auditing per se.
Correct. So I think what, just to go back to the committee discussions for a moment, that Director Constan and I had talked about is having some set templates so that there's common reporting from the committees that comes, comes out. And so I would expect that there'd be a similar template for the work of each of the committees and the task force so that there's a commonality that staff has an expectation, has some work, and then how things get reported at the board level.
Okay.
No, I agree. I think we need to come to those agreements up front. So I'm, and again, taking a step back at a bigger process. I haven't been in leadership in my two years, which means I'm left out of a lot of discussions. And I'm looking for, I'm going to ask you two as our leaders to figure out how to spread the wealth here on some of those discussions. Is the expectation that the two of you would come up with a template and present to us? Or would you engage us in that discussion, for example? And we don't need to have that here, but I just want to-
Good question, yeah.
-plant a flag on that.
Yeah, what I would say is distributive leadership allows a lot more work to get done, so people should jump in.
I can't jump in if I don't know the conversations.
Right, well, we have to get our committees, so- So, yes.
Okay.
So I'm saying yes.
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 Good point. Director Scott?
Yeah, Director Moore, did you have anything? I had a separate section, a different subject, but I didn't know. Okay. In the views of responsible officials, and actually, this was your comment that I agreed with, and I appreciate that, the end of this, and I hate wordsmithing during these meetings, but I do...
But go ahead.
But I'm going to do it anyway. I think that it does get a little confusing, the end, to just say, in the case of contracted audits, they can be released without inclusion, but if no response is received, then we'll note that. I'm wondering if it's just easier to say, because we're really applying the same standard to both at the very beginning, a final draft of each audit report, whether performed in-house or contracted out, shall be delivered to the manager responsible for the audit engagement, blah, blah, blah. Because we say in here already that if you don't get a response, you can publish it.
So the answer is yes.
Okay, I'll send you some language.
Okay.
Great.
And then I do want to just second, because I think the superintendent's point is actually really important. As someone who has written, you know, responses that disagree with the auditor and said, I'm not going to do a corrective action plan because you were wrong, it's actually one of the most important parts of the audit process. And way better and healthier for an organization than leadership that just says, sure, sure, we agree with those findings, and doesn't do anything with them. So that's actually a really healthy dialogue that the board needs to have, so thank you for...
And even the auditor is nodding her head at that.
Yes. They can disagree.
So, question, is 15 working days adequate time? Because, you know, we've got a lot going on here. We're not a, we're not at a smooth-flying district level.
It's in our...
And to have to kind of drop everything and, you know, we've seen with the state audit what that took in terms of time for response.
So we had a discussion about that. And one thing, this is, again, language straight out of our policy. So just, that's where it came from. And the discussion that we've had with the other auditors is that an internal performance audit function is different from an external performance audit, in which they're sort of, you know, dropping it on you, and then here's, you know, come back with us, you know, right away with an answer when you might have not even been participating in the findings. And the process as described with an internal performance audit is, there's ongoing interaction. I mean, the auditors are district staff. It's all with one objective, which is to make PPS better. And that the dropping of an audit on, it's just not how it happens with an internal performance auditor. There's ongoing discussions and usually a very collaborative approach because they're working with their colleagues.
I asked the same question. If the internal auditor spends six months developing findings, and then I have 15 days, you know, so, you know, there's an equity issue there. But I did ask, and you know, what I learned was, this is kind of a standard timeline. And if the process is as you described, then we would be in the know along the way, right? This isn't an "I got you" process internally, right?
No. Not "I got you."
Yeah. I mean, there should be no surprises, because really, I mean, one of those, one of the things, I think, a key difference is instead of waiting till the end of the audit and like, hey, you should have done X, it is a continuous process improvement. So they're not going to see something, you know, in month one and then not report it till the end. Like, you could have made this process improvement three months ago. It's really, it's very different from an internal performance auditing standard than, hey, we're here to do the audit, and then when we're done, you need to respond, and you don't have any sense of what's happening in between, but it's...
No. There will be ongoing communication with the process owners.
This is recorded live.
Yes. No, we do, I do not want any surprises, and that is something, and also, GAGAS, the state, that there has to be transparency. So it will be an ongoing communication, so it's not going to be a surprise.
Director Bailey?
The new number five under independence and objectivity. How is that stating anything different from number four? And it's...
Actually, may I add, may I comment on that? Actually, I would like to remove number four and replace it with number five.
Well...
Because that kind of gives clarity.
Can I wordsmith it? Because it's...
It depends.
I'm sorry.
How would you like to wordsmith it?
It's just feels a little, I'm sorry to be critical, but it's a little tortured.
You should read GAGAS. The whole thing is tortured. They have a language unto their own.
But our responsibility is to be clear. And I would try to say the same thing, but just more affirmatively.
So you, I mean, they're getting a couple of comments from others, so I think you can...
Send them forward.
Yeah. Send them offline.
The next revision.
I mean, not to change, not to change the meaning of it, I think I get what...
Something just like the auditor will not be affected by influence that compromise professional judgment, thereby alone. Once you send language, I would like to move this next week. We should have our stand, this is all part of standing up the audit function, not next week, but our next board meeting. We have a new auditor coming on board. I can't imagine I'm going to have an issue with the language you send. Is there anything else?
I think the discussion at hand was...
I'll try to combine four and five into something.
Was, we're going to have a work session to have a broader conversation about the audit function. So the question, I believe, from Director Moore was, can we suspend the vote on the charter until after we've had that discussion?
Well, if it gets scheduled next board meeting, because one of the things is, we've now had an auditor, this got brought forward three months ago, and it couldn't get on the board agenda, and we should have some pretty clear public guidelines on what, how the auditor is going to operate, and what the standards are, and the authority. It's best practice. So if the conversation's going to happen at the next board meeting, yes, but otherwise, then we're another month into thing, and we, into the work, and we have an audit underway, and it would be good for not only the auditors, but also other staff and the community to understand what the standards, authorities, independence, and objectivity is.
I would say to Director Scott's point that we are fluid and we can make changes. I think we've done a tremendous amount of work on this charter, so we can vote on the charter. I'm suggesting we vote on the charter at our next meeting, and then if in our discussion at our work session, we come up with any material changes that really are inconsistent with the charter, then we bring some changes forward to the charter. I think we've done the bulk of the work on the charter through this process.
And I would like to just state that the purpose of the charter is to really define the internal audit's purpose, authority, and responsibility. So those are the things that is in here. So, and if there's, like I said, a lot of this information came out of the policies and the GAGAS book, and also the IIA standards, so...
And been reviewed by some of the best and most experienced auditors in the state.
Yes, that too. Thank you.
So Director Bailey, if you want to send me some of your language from four and five, Director Scott, you're sending me some language on something else. Is there anything, anybody else?
All right. Thank you, everybody, for your input on this. With apologies for the late hour, we have another item that was pulled from the business agenda. So do I have a motion to consider Resolution 5956, which is the resolution authorizing the naming of the new Lincoln High School athletic field, the Mike Walsh Field?
So moved.
Director Brim Edwards moves. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Director Moore, seconds. All of you have before you a slightly amended resolution, so the only change are just the... It was distributed upstairs, or at the day, yes. Yes. This is what happens when you miss the... Excuse me. So the only changes to this resolution are the additional two paragraphs. The Board of Education agrees to extend the naming rights of the Mike Walsh Field until 2038 or 15 years from the point that the new athletic field is ready for use. And be it further resolved that the Board of Education acknowledges that this generous investment for academic supports of student athletes at Lincoln High School is the first step of a district-wide effort to supporting the academic needs of student athletes, with focus on our historically underserved and often marginalized students of color in every one of our comprehensive and alternative schools. And be it further resolved that Portland Public Schools engaging with the fund for Portland Public Schools will work to identify additional fiscal supports that help eliminate gaps in academic achievement for student athletes and support PPS student athletes in attaining college scholarships. So this is just an important addendum to the original resolution that acknowledges with gratitude this gift to the Lincoln community from a generous outside donor, and also brings us back to an intention, actually, that our district athletic director has had for several years around creating a structure of supports for student athletes in all of our high schools, increasing college scholarships that come into our student athletes, and really creating a robust program of supports. Director Lowry?
I want to join Director Scott in the wordsmithing. And so there's just one little grammatical error on the second line of the first added paragraph, which is effort to supporting the academic needs. It should either be effort supporting or effort to support.
Yes.
So which, which do we like?
Yours. It's yours.
Effort to support.
Okay. Delete ing. Any other comments?
At some point, we need a motion to amend the resolution.
Oh, yes, indeed. So we have our original motion.
I would move the amendment.
Second. Director Brim Edwards moves. Director Bailey seconds the motion to amend the underlying resolution. Any comment on the amendments? All right. Seeing none, all in favor of Resolution 5956?
No, all in favor of the amendment.
Excuse me. All in favor of the amendment to Resolution 5956.
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Any opposed? Okay, no abstentions. The amendment is approved by a vote of seven to zero. Now we'll take a vote on the resolution as amended, or last...
Do you have any board discussion?
Any further discussion?
As amended.
Just quickly, I want to speak to the, just overall resolution. I want to thank the Walsh family. I was on the board when they made their first donation in the early 2000s in honor of Mike Walsh. And also want to note that I fully support the additional language that's been added. So as a district that we show up equitably for our student athletes, there are two additional, there are two items that I spoke to the Chief Engagement Officer, Jonathan Garcia, about. One, I'd like, while we're approving, the superintendent signing the agreement, I've asked for the donation agreement. There is a small, there's a difference between what the resolution says and what the, which is to support athletic programming, but in the document that we received from Mr. Garcia, it has that the dollars we use to support student athlete eligibility, including but not limited to athletics tutoring, academic mentoring, study tables, and one-on-one support, so just much more specific. So I'd like to see the agreement. And also, another topic that Mr. Garcia and I discussed was, now that the fund is up and stood up, starting July 1, that we were going to have sort of a policy package that would come to the Policy Committee to discuss, you know, a topic that a lot of people in the community are interested in, which is sort of fundraising and how we do that in an equitable way, in order to, because really, our community is very generous, and how do we do that in a way that really supports all our students? So I want to thank Jonathan Garcia for the openness and the willingness to engage in that discussion going forward, because I think it'll be a great one, and this is a great donation for us to kick off our work with.
You're here.
Yeah, I also want to say thank you to the Walsh family for continuing their generous support of our students.
All right. Call to vote on the amended resolution. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? No abstentions. The resolution is passed by a vote of seven to zero. Do we still have that other contracting?
Yeah.
We have one...
I believe Ms. Martinek is ready.
Oh, you poor thing.
She said she was still going to stay till the end. I did assure that.
One more outstanding item from the business agenda.
And this is sort of a more formality, so that we have done our due diligence as a board. There was a contract that sort of outside the normal process was added to the agenda today, and it's now been posted, but it wasn't posted last week. So I've asked Ms. Martinek to speak about why it is that we need to consider it this evening, and so thank you for staying till the very end.
Of course. Thank you. The invoe contract, the reason it got to you today is there was some miscommunication, some timing issues. We were also waiting for a couple of weeks for the contractor to return some information in the contract language for us. So we missed some timelines, there was some miscommunication. The reason we continued to ask for it to be pushed forward is because these are services to our students with autism and autism-like needs. And so it's crucial that they have the supports and services within that first week of school. So that's, that was the reason why we did the big push, even though we had missed some pieces, so. So I appreciate that.
You can't provide services without an approved contract?
Correct.
Will allow that to occur?
That is correct.
And just to offer further testimony, we're extremely appreciative of invoe as a partner, because our initial discussion in bringing them aboard in PPS is they provide a capacity that doesn't currently exist in the district, and it's a gradual release model. So as they work and train our educators, then, you know, they'll slowly make their way out. But it really is a critical service for some of our most vulnerable kids.
Right. I did want to make a comment. I asked our senior director, Mary Mertz, how the relationship has been going, and she let me know, she said it's been a wonderful partnership. They've really helped us get our RBIAs and our BCBAs, which is our board-certified behavior support and specialists. We have helped them, and they have helped us. We have learned from each other. It's been a great partnership. What we are doing this year is we're reducing the contract by a third. Our hope is to do it by another third or in half by next year, because as we grow our own certified specialists, then we will reduce the contract. But it's been an amazing partnership. And invoe came through at a crucial time for us, where we needed that support, and we did not have the ability or the skill set at that time to be able to provide those services, so. That's it.
Thank you.
Of course, thank you.
Thank you for staying. All right. Lastly, do we have any board committee or conference reports? Oh, we need to vote on that contract, excuse me.
On the entire business agenda. Of which that's a part.
So that was not pulled out, we just wanted to have discussion on it.
So moved.
Director Bailey moves. Do I have a second?
Second.
Director Bailey moves. Director Moore, seconds. A vote on the business agenda. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? No abstentions. The business agenda is approved by a vote of seven to zero. Thank you very much. Lastly, do we have any committee reports?
Now you will see why nobody knows what's happening in committees, because nobody wants to stay to hear the committee reports. So I have two very brief ones. So the Audit Committee met on the 12th and we put together a draft work plan, which I will circulate to, thank you, I'll circulate to everybody. We had a great discussion on sort of the essential elements over the next 12 months, what needs to happen. Again, I'll circulate that. We also had an update on the hiring of the senior internal performance auditor. And as the board knows, we approved that, we authorized that at the last board meeting, so that's close to being done. We also had an overview of the initiation of the audit that's about ready to start on contracts. That was done by the internal performance auditor, Mary Catherine Moore. We discussed and referred to the full board, the draft committee charter. And we also had a brief management update on the implementation of the Secretary of State's audit. So that's what happened to the Audit Committee. So there is, this Thursday, in the Policy and Governance Committee, there's going to be three policies considered. One, hopefully, this is the final lap of the professional conduct policy. And as people may know, we've been working on this for eight or nine months. The last meeting, we had great participation from PAT in sort of sharing their perspectives on a couple of critical points that I think helped us get to some language that will make it be easier to operationalize in a school. We had engagement from the board and staff. That combined version was recently shared, once again, with the Portland Association of Teachers. They provided additional feedback. So tomorrow morning, or maybe later tonight, I'm going to send it, that will be sent out, the version that we just got back today, be sent out to the committee members. I'm going to send it to the rest of the board, too. And I would encourage board members who aren't on the committee to like, to join us at the committee meeting or take a look at the most recent, the version that we're going to talk about on Thursday. If you have comments, feel free to give me a call or send them to the full committee. Because we, I think this will be the meeting that we send it back to the board for a first reading. And hopefully, we've, I say, we've discussed every word several times, I think.
I do want to emphasize, especially with the work of the Policy and Governance Committee, that really is important for all of us to look through those policies when we first get them, so that we can get questions answered, which is not to say that we don't have open discussion when it comes to the board, but it's always better to get a running start on it by trying to address some of those questions before we get to the dais.
And so any board members, always free to come to the committee and participate as a board member. The other two items that are going to be, and I just want to flag this for all board members, because again, there may be issues that you're interested in. And we invite you to come to the committee or weigh in. We're going to be considering a policy, and this will be another item that we likely will be referring out for a first reading. It's the healthy and substance-free schools. And again, this was work that was done with Brenda Martinick and her team. And I think we're at, we're at a good place with the draft. And I want to really thank the committee members and staff for helping us with that. So that likely will be coming. I think I sent it to everybody yesterday. So send your comments if you've got them. And then the third item, and this won't be something we vote out, but I will, we'll send it around when we get the, when we have the first draft. But we have a request to modify our search and seizure policy. And this is something that administrators were looking for additional guidance on. Not only did they, we need to revise the policy, but the AD need to be revised. And there was a request that it happen before the start of school. We just have the draft now, so I think administrators have guidance going forward. Is that correct, Ms. Larch?
They do, and also, I think some of the, there's been quite a queue at the Policy and Governance Committee to get this... There are many policies that we've been trying to get done by the first of the year, so... Mary Kane has been working on it for a long time.
So we will have just the first discussion at the committee. And again, I'll share it with everybody. And feel free, if this is a topic of particular interest or you have questions, engage, because it's great to get the feedback at the front end versus when we bring it for the first reading.
Think it may be helpful if you could frame concerns when you send something out. Like, we're starting a discussion on X policy. Here's some of the concerns that we've heard going in, especially to help our newer board members, but even some of our older board members.
More experienced.
Not age, more, more experienced.
I'll own the old thing.
Ms. Larch, did you want to add something here?
Just to give you some context on the search and seizure policy and what's...
Again, I'm not asking for that now, but in the, in the email going out.
Little context setting when it comes around. We, I think we understand. Yeah. All right, any other business for the good of the order? Superintendent?
I guess under conference and as a member of the council, great city schools, we receive an annual report. Everybody got a hard copy. Hopefully, you'll have a chance to see the array of support and services that they do provide as a result of our institutional membership, which includes a lot of role-alike convenings for senior staff in addition to the legislative work and lobbying for funding that impacts us in the end. And of course, we look forward to seeing many of you at the fall conference.
All right, thank you very much.
Just real quickly, two different things, and these are informal, and we might want to add to the list. I've been sitting in on climate justice committee meetings. As they've gone through enacting what we supported in the budget and in our resolution, there's been a lot of progress made. We're, I wasn't involved in it, but the committee itself have, of teachers and staff jointly went through a hiring process that's this close to being finalized to work on curriculum. We also discussed at the last meeting the September 20th strike. And it won't be the only strike day this year. So to start brainstorming with senior leadership about how to support student safety and also ways that we can engage students in school with some prepared lesson plans to provide an alternative for going out on the streets. So it was really good discussion there. And secondly, again, informally, our quiet work abdicating around Harriet Tepin Middle School and the proposed Rose Quarter I V project continues. And we've been very strong in our advocacy for students in the school community there.
I really appreciate your work on that.
Chair Constam, I had been asked to do a report on our participation in the Accelerating Board Capacity Institute. But I think to defer to Director Moore's feelings about bringing up Boston and the Red Sox being a sensitive subject right now with their 18-loss streak happening. And also, the fact...
Is that for real?
That's for real. And the fact that my soon-to-be freshman daughter needs her mom, and the cat is apparently out of cat food. I would propose delaying that till next meeting.
All excellent reasons for me to say this meeting is a jerk.